Call the meeting to order for the North Reading School Committee, October 16th, 2017. First order of business is public input, seeing none. Before we get to our agenda, I want to welcome Michael Scannell tonight. He'll be the new reporter covering us for the North Reading transcript, and we look forward to working with Mike. So, thanks, thanks a lot, Mike, for -- we were worried we're going to be left uncovered, so.
You're covered.
We're glad to have you here. Thanks. Okay, next student report, we have Michael Tyrell, who is a junior at the high school. Michael?
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Tyrell. So, just to jump right into things, I mean, our athletic teams, I mean, as per usual, they're doing really, really well. The football team, as many of you, I hope, know, emerged victorious in the Cape Ann League on Friday. They defeated Masconomet Regional High School 20 to 14. I mean, it was a thrilling game. Masconomet, I mean, at the end, they almost had it, they almost had the victory, but a stroke of luck allowed us to win in overtime.
They missed, so there was six seconds left, and Masconomet entered a 22-yard field goal.
It was 22.
Which was wide left. And there were like a thousand penalty flags, and everybody thought North Reading was offside, and it was an illegal motion against Masconomet. So, it's unbelievable.
And then we run into OT.
Yeah.
He scored a touchdown.
Great.
It's great. I mean, hopefully, they can progress even further than last year, in which they reached the semifinals. That was an amazing result, but I think, you know, they can even go further this year in the state tournament. I mean, our success isn't just limited to football. The girls soccer team and volleyball team are both one win away from entering their respective state tournaments. Our teams not only bring success to the school, but also maintain our values and excellent principles. The golf team was awarded the Cape Ann League Sportsmanship Award. Lastly, senior night for boys soccer was last Thursday, where they defeated Linfield 2-1. And Field Hockey has senior night actually at 7:00 tonight, so, coming up. These athletic successes are in part due to our excellent new facilities, such as the weight room, which allow our amazing athletes numerous resources to improve. And our new facilities don't just, are not just limited to athletic success, but also they promote the fine arts, such as through the large performing arts center. During the first 10 days of December, on the first, second, eighth, and ninth, the high school Maskers will put on Beauty and the Beast, which they've been diligently preparing for us. And I think that'll be an excellent performance when it does come. Also, on November 4th, the Friends of Horner Productions is sponsoring the annual Holiday Marketplace on Main Street, another example of our school's facilities benefiting the larger community. The proceeds here will go to the middle school arts programs. A number of clubs and other extracurricular activities have hosted events recently. The Student Council hosted the New Teacher Luncheon on October 6th, where they welcome the new teachers to the high school. The Student Council also sent a small delegation of students to Officer Shop, which is a program in which they learn leadership skills and hopefully bring those back to our council, including one Student Council member, who is also doubles as a student representative, Elizabeth Barrett. I think you'll meet her later this year. The Student Council is also hosting the Food Drive to support the North Reading food pantry during the highly demanding holiday season. As many of you know, the Food Drive actually says they gain many of their, much of their food supplies through donations, so it's really important that we support this. So far, we've raised 1,200 items of the 6,000 goals, so we're directly on our path to complete that. The Indirect Club has also hosted the Hats for Hurricanes fundraiser and raised over $550 to support the efforts of the Red Cross in Puerto Rico, Texas, and Florida after the devastating hurricanes there. There is also going to be a speaker for International Club this Wednesday. In addition to the number of clubs and athletic activities going on, there have been a number of programs to support students that are going to take place the next month and have been taking place. Financial Aid Night, hosted by the high school guidance department, will be, will take place this Thursday, the 19th. On November 9th, the Reality Fair will also take place, which will help junior students explore potential career opportunities. Last Wednesday, the film Screen Angels was shown to educate parents on how to best assimilate technology into their busy lives and their, in their son's or daughter's busy lives. There's a panel after the film as well, which two student representatives, Bridget Gruh, I think you met a few weeks ago, and me participated in. Senior students have also begun to apply to college on early decision, and college representatives continue to speak at guidance. Lastly, there are a number of programs to aid students to manage their stress, and those are being implemented as the school year goes on. Mr. Votto, a math teacher and junior varsity soccer coach for the boys, hosts a mindfulness and health and wellness session on school, after school on Tuesdays. And Power Down is also a program during Power Block that consists of yoga and other physical activities. I mean, as you can see, there's so many activities going on that benefit all spheres of our student body, which is excellent. And, you know, a lot of this comes from our new facilities and just excellent diligent work of not only our students, but also our teachers. And I have one piece of solid work, student work for you all. It is solid, I tell you.
I was going to say, we'll be the judge.
It's from my APUS history class. We simply had to use pieces of evidence we'd gathered from class through various documents and write an introductory paragraph with a thesis, and then various topic sentences with supporting details, kind of a skeleton of an essay, so to speak. And it's pretty short, and there's a rubric on the back, just a typed-out rubric. So, I'll just pass that around.
Thank you.
Any questions for Michael?
Good job, Mike. And getting an A-plus from me, you've mentioned the new facilities four times.
Exactly.
Always a goal.
I greatly appreciate that.
And that they're used by the entire community, not just the school on a, from, you know, from seven to three, or whatever.
I mean, it really is. It makes this area hub, you know what I mean?
Right.
All sorts of activities go on all the time.
There still could be more use, but we're starting to use it more on a regular basis.
What was that date, Mike, in the Holiday Market? Was it November 4th?
I think, yeah, November 4th.
Okay.
The girls, I know girls soccer played today against Rockport, so if they won, they qualify for the...
Jerrylan was predicting a win at our meeting this afternoon.
She did predict a win.
Jerrylan's on a scoring streak.
I know.
Jerrylan is, she is.
Nine goals?
She is.
And I do have to say, that football game was incredibly exciting. And it was kind of cool, because they let the kids and the parents, after about five minutes when the coaches talking to the players, they let the kids go onto the field.
Field?
And, yeah, because it was a, it was a big win.
It's a big upset.
Masco was ranked number three in Division II.
Particularly where they have us now in that Division III tournament seating there. That's going to be tough.
So, anyway. Thanks, Michael.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. We're going to switch the agenda around a bit. We're going to skip over the MSBA SSBC update for now. I wish we could kind of skip over it forever. It's been on the agenda for about six years. And we're going to go to new business. We have three separate proposals tonight. First, we'll call up Ms. Allison Kane, who is a performing arts teacher, renowned leader of the Maskers, among other things, head of the Beauty and the Beast. Yes. No, you can, actually, we can just come, just get you a microphone. Yeah, probably is better if you come up here, sit up here. And Allison's going to talk to us about a overnight trip to New York City for students of the Performing Arts Program.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
So, hi, I'm Allison Kane. And I'm here to talk about the performing arts trip to New York City that we're proposing. So, every couple of years, we try to take an educational trip and give our students an opportunity to go into the real world and try their hand in the performing arts field. We find New York City covers every base that we need there. So, over a weekend in April, so a Saturday and a Sunday, we'd like to leave early in the morning. We take a chartered bus with 55 students. Actually, it's 50 students and five chaperones. And we get there, we stay at a hotel in Times Square. We've had a relationship with them now for 10 years. We'd like to see a matinee. We normally have a talkback where they meet the actors. My tech people go backstage and work with like a stage manager or someone in the field. The instrumentalists can work with orchestra. So, we try to cover all bases in the performing arts. We have dinner planned at Bucod de Beppo together. And then at night, there's some time to look around Times Square. Some students like to want to try to see another show, so they can always add on an additional show. We have enough chaperones to split the group in two. If there's enough students to want to do that, I personally would see another show in a heartbeat. So, I would do that. We stay overnight one night. We take a Broadway class in the morning, so one of the shows that we see, we get to meet those actors, and then we get one-on-one hands time with those performers. They can teach them everything from, something from their show, to how to audition, to how to build, or how to do stage makeup, or stage combat. There's some variety, depending on the student's interest. We have another little break to look around Times Square again. We meet up for lunch, we see another show, and then we head back home and time for bedtime Sunday night. We, like I said, it's a 55-passenger bus that we take. We offer fundraising opportunities for the students. Our music boosters do help us out with fundraising, as well as myself and Eric Foreman. And some of the options that we have, we do caroling and choral grams. We have a big band fundraiser we're going to try in February this year. We sell Yankee Candle, bake sales. So, we try to, we try to defray at least half the cost. Sometimes with candy canning, kids can defray all the cost, depending on how, how much they sell with their fundraisers.
Any questions for Allison?
No, it's an ambitious itinerary you have.
Oh, it's fun.
By the time they get home, they're going to be tired.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I want to go.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to know, why, why do they need a dollar when you check into the hotel?
So...
One dollar, that's all it's...
One dollar, that's the baggage holding fee.
Oh, okay.
So, if our rooms aren't ready, we have to be ready to pay a dollar per bag.
For a bag.
Yeah, right?
I didn't think you'd get anything for a dollar anymore.
Right?
It's a good deal.
Yeah. And we only use backpacks, too. So, I mean, in the past, they haven't charged us, but it is in the contract that it says you must have a dollar per, per bag if they have to hold on to them and the rooms aren't ready.
And, and the pass of these trips been completely booked?
Completely booked. I'm very willing to take a separate bus if we can fill that bus up.
I was going to say, do you have more than 50 that want to go?
We have had more than 50 that want to go. It's, it's a little cost prohibitive if we don't, we can't fill up a full bus.
Second bus.
But if we can get close, about two-thirds or so, then we can take a separate bus.
So, you won't cap it at just one bus? If you say have 75 kids or 80 kids that want to go?
If there's 80 kids, we can take two buses, absolutely. Yeah. If, if there's 57 kids, we can't take that.
Of course, 80 kids would mean eight chaperones.
Absolutely, a one in 10 ratio.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the overnight trip to New York for the performing arts students.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Julie, second by Janine. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
December 1st is sneaking up pretty quick.
What? There's something going on?
[laughing]
I didn't know. Yeah, it's coming. I'll see y'all there.
You will.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have two North Reading students, Kyle Bythrow and Michael Brown. And they're here to propose a new high school extracurricular club called Students for Soldiers.
This is the one that works. It's the cable TV. Okay, so this one.
Sorry, Matt. Now, I was going to, I was going to say, did Masconomet fumble through the end? Is that what happened?
Hi, I'm Michael Brown. I'm a senior.
And I'm Kyle Bythrow. I'm also a senior here at North Reading. Before we get started, I'd just like to ask how many of you have either a family member or someone close to you that's in the military? And we ask that while we go through this PowerPoint, you keep them in mind and just how much they would enjoy receiving something like this.
So, our mission statement is to make sure no soldier is left alone during mail call. So, when we were brainstorming ideas and we were talking to local bases, one thing that Mr. Downs, the vice principal, brought up was that there are some soldiers that, when he was deployed, that they don't get anything from home. And that, I mean, there are some soldiers that just get flooded with things from home. That just makes their deployment easier. So, our main goal is to make sure, you know, every soldier is, you know, they feel like they've been thanked and that they, you know, what they do for our country is just like amazing, that they, they know that.
Students for Soldiers is, we would start a club, and we want to fundraise by selling T-shirts, or bake sales, or other things that the club members could think of, and have people write letters and to send out. And the fundraising money would go towards care packages to send out to bring to bases.
So, our major events would be Christmas letters to soldiers. There's so many soldiers out there that I do know other clubs do do that. It's just there's, there isn't as many people in here as there are soldiers that are deployed. So, there would be some we could send to, selling student-made T-shirts, and then handing over care packages. And some of the care packages would just have like simple toiletries, you know, snacks, things from home that, that isn't perishable. And then other things, just like, like magazines, socks, gum, stuff like that. Just like cheap things, but, but just something that would just make them, you know, accustomed to like US products. And many of them are overseas where they don't have US products.
This is just an example of some of the things they could bring in.
So, the main question is, why do you want to start this club, is what I've been asked. And for me, I have a cousin that just joined the Marines, and he's studying language, to be a translator for Arabic. And I had two relatives that were, both my uncles are Marines. And that the, the one thing that they always talked about was just letters from home is what like made them just, just want to keep going on. Because they said sometimes it can be depressing, like sometimes it can be boring, sometimes there isn't anything to do. And just little like glimpses from home just make things better. And just personally, I just feel like that's just, to me, the mil, people in the military, I have so much respect for them, just for what they do for our country. They put their lives on the line. They leave their loved ones for extended periods of time. And just like the, the little small thing, just to make their day better, just means extraordinary amounts to me.
There have been schools around the area that have had a similar club and has, have been successful, so we, we look to do the same thing.
Our advisor would be Mr. Wall. He's the football coach here, and he's science teacher. And we have about 20 to 30 kids that are definite that they want to do it. And there's a little bit more kids, but our, so I think we have a pretty good following. And we have a, a good amount of like freshmen, we have about five to 10 that want to do this, so they could help carry the club, so it doesn't die out. And like, our main goal is, is like, I kind of think of it as like, like with a tree or a plant, you have to set the roots down before it can grow. So, we need to like get the roots in. And then we just need to be able to expand, just to, you know, if we get more, we, in the future, when we start fundraising more money, we can start making more care packages, stuff like that. That's all we have.
Any questions or comments?
I, I have two. I mean, you answered most of the questions, and I think it's a great idea, and I think very nice presentation. So, thank you for coming tonight. The two questions I just had were, number one, the ages for the club. Is it going to be high school only, or are you looking to try to have something for the middle school as well? And then, secondly, is there a bank account yet? Because I know for different activities, we've gone through like what, you know, handling the money, and it's, maybe that's for Mr. Connolly, if, whether there's a bank account set up for this organization yet?
Yeah, I think, I think for the bank account, that would be handled. I think the advisor would, would work with Michael to set that up.
Afterwards, okay.
I also think on the middle school, that would have to be a separate...
It would be a separate club, or is it...
Correct. I don't think we can have middle school...
They're, Michael and Kyle, it's not just high school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know one thing is, is I think it'd, I think it'd be better to be just high school, just because, I mean, I mean, I know the middle school, if we wanted to, we could incorporate them. But I mean, just with the care package thing, I just think, it just like with the high school, it just, there's a little bit more mature group. So, I think they can like get the, like the sense of like a more time zone. I, I think sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they could help out if they, in the future, if they ever wanted to do something like that. But it'd probably just be a separate North Reading High School club.
Congratulations. Great idea. Glad to see you guys came up with it, and I hope you have great participation as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I was a teacher, I'd give you guys an A for the, for the quarter. So, lucky, lucky I'm not a teacher, it'd be an easy grade. But it's a great idea, it's admirable. I did have one question. Is there some kind of state, or national, or group that you have to make sure everything is approved, that you send to the soldiers? Do you get a list or something? How does that work?
I'm pretty sure they have a list of things that you can send, but that wasn't hard for us to find.
Okay.
So, there's other groups that do it, so.
And I, I contacted Hanscom Air Force Base, if I'm pronouncing that right.
Hanscom, yeah.
Yeah. And the Public Affairs Officer, she was a really nice lady. She emailed me back, and she, she, she gave me the contact information from the person that I'd have the contact. And he hasn't emailed me back yet. I emailed him two days ago. She said he'd be emailing back in five to seven business days. But she said, you just, if you could just go through him. And then Mr. Downs said that he, he has the ability to get onto the base, so if, if we have to, he can bring them to the, to the base, the care packages, and we could just go through them. And he said that the base can also help you with like telling you what to put in it, and stuff like that, giving you a list. Or you can go to the national website, and it has things of what you should, you could put in a care package and stuff like that.
Okay.
Great.
Any other questions?
Very well.
Yeah, you can ask a question.
How do they determine who the package goes to? Does someone in the base, or what? How does it get distributed?
The, the Public Affairs Officer, the way, the way, this is how I interpreted it from what she sent me. She said, they know that there are soldiers that have families, that, and whenever the families want to send something to the soldiers, they send it to her, and she helps organize it. So, she does know that there are soldiers that are lacking things, or some soldiers that don't get things. So, she said she can make sure that like, we always have a solid list of soldiers that like, that are getting something. And then even if we, because we're a new club, say, she says she has 25 soldiers, we can only make like 22 care packages, or something like that. She said there are certain soldiers that they'll get something like once or twice a year, that they would be the ones that would be like the three excluded. But she says, they're all soldiers that were like 18-year-old kids, that were orphans, that just joined up and don't have anyone. So, she said that they would be the first priority people.
Well, great job, great idea. It's great you guys came up with it. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve a Students for Soldiers Club for a two-year trial period. And then after that, if it is successful, it will continue on.
Right.
Second. Motion by Janine, second by Jerry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Great job.
Thank you.
Kyle, you going to get back this season, or what?
At least for Thanksgiving.
You'll be back for Thanksgiving, all right.
You'll be back for third round playoffs.
All right, that, that sounds good. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a presentation, or no? So, can we get back to our regular seats, or do you have a...
No, we can speak from here.
No, but I mean, so we can sit back at our regular seats.
Oh, yeah, you can sit here right now.
You just need a microphone. I'll give you a microphone.
You don't, you don't have to sit, but you're welcome.
We got a soccer update for you.
Yes.
10-0.
10-0.
I'm not kidding.
[inaudible]
I, I didn't, no, I just got it via text. Once, once you mentioned that, I checked in, and, I didn't believe it.
You said the soccer, yeah, the girls soccer. Okay. That's a, that was a pretty awesome thing to just sit through with those two guys from the high school.
I give them a lot of credit.
Yeah.
Particularly, a lot of the things that are going on today in the country.
Exactly. Okay, next, we have another, which is becoming an annual presentation for, from the North Reading High School Model United Nations. And we have Mr. Satiras Pinzopoulos here, and two students, Caitlin Galvin and second appearance tonight, guest, a guest star appearance tonight by Michael Tyrell.
He's everywhere.
And he's unbelievable. And they're going to talk about a proposal to attend the 2018 Harvard Model United Nations Conference.
All right. So, thanks for having us here today. Again, my name is Satiri Pinzopoulos. I'm the advisor for the Model United Nations. We've been a club here at the school for several years now. We've actually gone to this event that we're looking for approval this year, the Harvard Model United Nations Conference. We've gone the past, I think this is our fourth or 50 year in a row. And we have a, a pretty big group here. We actually meet in the DLL as often as we can at this point. We're bi-weekly. We do our debates, discussions in this room. As of right now, we have about 53 stu, we have 53 students in the club. For the Harvard Model United Nations Conference, we would have anywhere from 14 to 16 seats. It all depends on two special applications that were just put in. Both Caitlin and Michael put in a special application for a specific type of committee at this conference. They can speak about it in a moment. But on my end, I'm just here to answer questions you guys may have about the conference. It would be an overnight. It would be from Thursday, January 25th through Sunday, January 28th. What we do is, we have parents volunteer to drive us, drop us off at the Sheridan Hotel in Boston. The conference takes place at that hotel. So, it's run by Harvard, but it's held at the Sheridan in Boston. And students are selected of the 53 students in the club. Maybe about 30 of them are interested in participating. We go through the debates that we have, and we select the 14 to 16 that are best fit for it, the people who are showing up every day, putting in a valiant effort. There's a registration fee, there's fees with the hotel. The way we've always done it in the past, we look at the number of students, we divide up the total amount. I total how much the hotel is, what the registration fee is, divide it up, and distribute it amongst the students. The exact fee is, as of right now, up in the air, because it depends on the male-to-female ratio, because of the rooms and the hotels. So, do we, do we get three quads, or two doubles, and a triple? It all depends on who we select. But last year, do you remember, give or take, was it 300 to 400 fee, something like that?
I think it was around between those two numbers.
Yeah, somewhere in there. It depends. The hotel fee goes up every year. But the students pay their way. Again, I'm here for any questions you may have. I could speak about the conference endlessly. It's a great opportunity for the students. Actually, the letter that was drafted was by, was it one of you?
Molly.
Molly, yeah. One of our other executive members, Molly Pfeffer, wrote the letter that you guys may have in front of you. We have extra copies if anyone needs. But I figured I'd let Caitlin and Mike speak about their experience, because they had gone in the past. They'll, they would like to go again this year, so I'll leave it to them.
Fine. Can you move the microphone over when...
Yeah.
Just make sure.
Thanks. So, I mean, the first thing I'd say is that, just logistically, we have, usually, we'll have under 20 people, so there will be two advisors coming.
Mr. Nosy will be the other advisor. He's also a teacher in the building.
And then, also, logistically, it's held in the Sheridan Hotel. And I don't know if any of you know about the Sheridan Hotel. It's connected to the Prudential Center, so students won't have to leave the building to get any food, or in case they lose something, they'll be able to stay in the Sheridan pretty much for the whole three, four days without issue. We haven't had any issues in the past. It's an excellent opportunity for the students, because, I mean, our next debate, we have a debate amongst each other on Thursday, is on nuclear nonproliferation. So, you know, students get an idea to look into different perspectives they wouldn't have held in the past, and they get to understand the world from completely different perspectives. They get to see things from a different way. And not only that, but at the actual conference at the Sheridan, there are kids from all around the world. Last year, there was a delegation of around 30 to 40 kids from Peru, United Kingdom, India. So, we get to meet all these new kids. We get to experience all these world events from different perspectives. It's an excellent opportunity for the school to represent itself as a, as a body that represents, that promotes multiple different activities. I mean, all around, we haven't had any issues. It's logistically smooth, and it's an excellent opportunity for the students and for the school.
Building off what Mike said, it's a really great opportunity to really go in-depth with the topic. Like, each student will be kind of, either one or two students will be assigned to different topics. Last year, I was on the Environmental Assembly, and we talked about fracking, and it was a topic I had never really investigated a lot, but I've just, now I know way more than I'd ever need to about it. But in the process, I got to interact with people from New Zealand and Canada that I still talk with on social media, and it's just a great experience to really explore something from the point of view of another country. Like, I know I have strong political beliefs, but we got to represent Denmark last year, and this year we're going to represent Uzbekistan. So, it's really an awesome experience.
I have one question. Is any chance that anybody from our delegation could play the role of Kim Jong-un at the...
Oh, on Thursday's debate?
No, at the, at the United, Model United Nations. Do you think there'll be a Kim Jong-un session?
My question is...
I don't, they won't even be in attendance.
You think they're going to let these kids from around the world come in to the country to attend? I mean, it's...
There's lots of fun involved in it, but it's also, just to give you a glimpse into the schedule, I don't know if you have any in front of you. We get there Thursday. We have opening ceremonies. We immediately go into a four-hour debate session until 11 o'clock at night. Then we wake up Friday morning. Oh, two debate sessions. We have a four-hour debate session from like eight, or nine to one lunch, and then you're there from, till like 11 o'clock at night. Go to bed, wake up the next morning. Repeat, repeat, repeat. So, it's a really fun conference, but it's also, you know, there's work involved. So, this is a, this is a student-driven, work-driven experience. It's also a ton of fun at the same time, so.
It's great.
Any other questions?
Who did you say you would be representing this year?
Uzbekistan.
Uzbekistan.
Where is that?
Come on, it's one of the stans.
It's right next to Kazakhstan.
Yeah.
Kyrgyzstan.
Kyrgyzstan, Alastans. They used to be part of Russia.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Again, as in the past, I've said, this is, I'm sure it's a great conference. The opportunity to mix and exchange views with kids from all over the world, with kids from all over the world, but also the chance to, you know, firsthand experience the issues that we're facing in the world, I think is, uh, it's a great, great opportunity that you don't get every day or m- much at all, especially when you're seventeen or eighteen. So, I, I think it's great.
I'm sure you guys are gonna hold your own too.
Hopefully.
So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, the trip by the North Reading High School Model United Nations to the, um, Harvard, two thousand eighteen Harvard Model United Nations Conference, January twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth. Second. Motion by Janine, second by Jerry. Any further comment? All's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have fun. What'd you say the score of that soccer game was, girl soccer?
Ten zero.
Ooh.
Ten zero. I'm assuming we won.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was a misprint, someone sent me a text. You mean one-zero? Nope?
Anything on, no boys soccer score?
Uh, I didn't.
Okay.
Are they away?
Yeah, they were, oh, they're playing tonight at Rockport.
Okay, so they're.
I think the game was at six-thirty.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks. That's always good to, uh, get a good flavor of what's going on at the high school, and tonight, we couldn't have got a better flavor.
You did a nice job.
Excellent to see students involved in global and local affairs.
Passionately involved.
Passionately involved, yeah, it's awesome. Okay, now let's get back to the mundane.
The mundane, that's coming up soon with the policy.
Oh, true.
That's called beyond mundane.
Don't diss the Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Venecia.
I'm not dissing the committee.
Alright. Okay, so back to, uh, continued business. We have the MSBA, MSBC update. Mr. Bernard.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
SSBC.
I think we're, we are coming to a close, I think, with the, uh, last SSBC meeting, uh, for the present, as exclusive of the, of the closeout, being on October twenty-fourth, but I do have a few things that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. Um, you might remember that there was some puddling that was occurring outside of the central office around that, that small island. A second drain was, uh, was installed. The, we're continuing to evaluate the success of that second drain being installed, so, uh, but I do, we'll have to say, um, that the contractor that was on-site, the Dow Company, has been very good, and is trying to resolve that, um, that problem. To date, all of the, um, re- trees and shrubs that were in need of being replaced, um, that work has been completed. I'm awaiting, uh, Bill Brown, whom some of you know as the, uh, land's contracted landscape architect, to come out and verify, um, the success of that work. That includes the three trees, um, heading over to this part of the school, um, on the left-hand side of the bridge, coming from the, uh, Main Street corridor, as well as, I think, about twenty-four smaller shrubs in some of the, um, some of the islands on the, on the front pavilion and out back. Um, you may have noticed that the hydroseeding of the areas that had been, uh, remaining, uh, in need of, of patch, was done on, uh, October fourth. That, that grass has started to germinate, which is a good thing. Quite honestly, I was impressed with the amount that got done, it exceeded what I thought was gonna get done, particularly on the sloped area alongside the library, so, um, again, that was the Dow Company that coordinated that, and they, they did a nice job bringing in fresh loam, um.
Also down at the, uh, athletic fields, I was surprised.
There's about four or five spots there, yeah.
We're gonna stake all that out, right, for the winter?
It is right now, I think.
It is now, it, it was the next day, yeah, really, it needed to be, and I'm glad that we did do that, particularly down low.
Yeah, it's applause to a number of.
Yeah, well, the, all of the islands we stake, but this right now has caution tape around it, and I think it has helped to.
That's the areas that were seeded.
Correct.
I'm talking, we're gonna stake out for the winter the entire.
We, we, we do, and we will.
Yeah.
Yes, all of the, all of the island berms and such, yes.
On that seeding, are we somehow able to water it? Because down there, it's.
It's funny, I had a conversation.
Cause it hasn't rained that much at all.
It's actually done better down there, but this area and the area outside of the central office have not. So I actually spoke to Wayne about it today, and we're gonna.
These are small areas.
Some water, it is, yeah.
Okay.
It's the time to do it, it's just we haven't had any rain.
Right, it's rained for like last two or three weeks, so.
And, uh, I'm pleased to tell you too, that the work that, um, to, to repair or seal the cracks in the asphalt paving was done last night, and they did an extensive amount of work. I don't know if you drove around, it's how they did, they did a lot.
They even did the road coming around by the middle school and that.
Yeah, they, the, the word was, look, we're gonna be here for the time, so get us to do as much as you want during that time. Once we're here and we have all the equipment, and they did, they did a lot, so.
What was the cost, John?
The cost of the work itself was just under forty-eight hundred dollars.
Who's paying for it?
That's coming out of the, uh, building project. They had appropriated, um, a not-to-exceed.
So that's the money we agreed to.
Correct, they had appropriated a not-to-exceed amount. We did also have one, uh, public works person here for the, for the work, to kind of oversee it, so there'll be a little bit of an additional cost.
We, we haven't made up our mind yet how we're gonna proceed on this, right?
Right.
As far as, uh, Gilbane.
We have not, I can tell you that there have been two communications to Gilbane from the town administrator indicating to them that, you know, if you wanna come out here and assess it for yourself, and take the pictures that you want, because the town is leaving its, its options open on how we pursue that. So that's been clearly communicated in writing.
And just so it's clear to the public, Gilbane basically, I mean, they said that the warranty has expired, um, the job was done correctly, and it's now your responsibility, that, in, in a nutshell, I think is what their answer was, correct?
I think that's about, sums it up.
I think the warranty has expired.
Right.
Question is whether the workmanship was, um, you know, u- up to standard, really.
Exactly.
And, and to extend that a little bit, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just the reason, again, for the public, the reason we felt the need to do this now was because before the winter, when, if water gets in, freezes, expands, so we, we did this more of a preventative maintenance, but, um, I think it was, I think it was the prudent thing to do, and we'll see, you know, what, what tact the SSBC and the town wanna take beyond, uh, beyond what was done last night, so.
Mister, um, uh, Mr. Bernard, if I could at this time, I think it's a good place for me to provide an update on what's going on down at the, uh, uh, field, the concession stand, and the, um, uh, new restroom building. Today, uh, or last week, the contractor received the shop drawings from the, um, company that is constructing the building in Connecticut. And, um, the concession stand was demolished last week, it's gone, maybe even the week before, actually.
I think it was midweek the week before, yeah.
We have, uh, the Department of Env- Department of Environmental Protection from the state DEP approval to tie in to the wastewater treatment plant.
Correct.
And I believe, or I hope, that we'll be seeing work soon on the site, now that they have the, the drawings. That the plan was to have this completed, this first, um, uh, first part of the project by mid-November. And then, January, February sometime, to have, the, the building is, is prefab building, to have it brought in. All of the fixtures are, are attached, everything is there. Um, they bring it in, they put it down on the site, and they basically connect everything. That's, um, there were some minor changes, um, I think it was a, a slightly bigger water tank.
It is.
Thirty-gallon water tank.
Correct.
A, a change in the location of the, um, where the electrical.
Yep.
Uh, box was gonna be.
Yep.
And I think that's it.
I think, well, too, we should try to decide on what we're gonna do with that facade.
I think we decided.
That, um.
I think we're moving forward.
I think we heard what the group wanted, and we're asking them to include.
We're gonna include that, right?
Yeah.
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 That came through about two, two or three hours ago.
I think we have to pick the color.
We do.
Right?
Right.
On the brick.
We're gonna go with the brick decided, right?
Yeah, we have, there's different color brick.
Yeah.
You gotta pick the right.
I think we sensed that that's what the group wanted us to pursue.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna look very similar to that sample, right? I think that sample that they left me is.
Exactly.
What we would like to try to match, so.
So that's moving along, we still have a completion date of March fifteenth. Wouldn't be a hundred percent complete till April sometime, when they can get the pave, uh, get the, um, pavement plants open and hot top plants and pave around the area. But I did notice that, um, I, I was at the football game Friday night, and it seemed like they were still doing a good business at the concession stand where it's located. It's a great central location, right next to the, uh, team room building, between the team room, and it's a little crowded, I will say. Um, but between the team room and the grandstands, so, um.
Music boosters, I think, have done a very good job of dealing with a little bit of adversity. I mean, I think they really, they understood what we were up against and what, what it meant for them, and they've really, I think, done about the best they could to, to, to accommodate.
I think it's, you have to do an all-construction project, there has to be some, uh.
I haven't heard a complaint.
You know, no, you know, and I checked in with them on, on Friday night, and they seemed pleased, you know, they, they, they were, they were doing a nice job of, of grinning and bearing it, so they know, they're, they're trying to look at the long-term benefit.
Forward, uh, looking, right.
It's good, it's nice to see that they are.
And the good news for them is it's highly likely we get a, uh, home playoff game.
Yes.
Well, we have Thanksgiving at home this year too.
Right.
Yeah, Thanksgiving, oh, we will, we will have a home playoff game.
Right.
Yeah, we will host at least a game, yeah.
Anyway.
And right, we have Thanksgiving this year too, so.
Right. Okay. Any questions on the, uh, building project update? The last, the last official scheduled meeting for the SSBC is next Tuesday.
Right.
There likely will be a meeting or two somewhere down the road when the project finally closes out with the MSBA.
Right.
But at this time, I don't think there'll be any more meetings scheduled after, um, next Tuesday.
October twenty-fourth.
What are we supposed to do on Tuesdays?
I don't know. You'll have, you'll have to stay home and have dinner with your wife.
Join a Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Get it seven AM though.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've gone through all the proposals. Um, next we have, um, appointing representatives to the newly created subcommittees, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee and the Contractor Review Subcommittee. Before we do that, uh, the one thing I wonder is, do we have to have a specific charge? Or shouldn't we have a specific charge of each committee, so we know, um, exactly what the two representatives are gonna be doing and, and what they'll be reporting back to, um, the committee? I'm throwing that out to the committee here. It seems to make sense. Jerry?
Yeah, I would, I would say what I would anticipate doing is trying to review the foundation budget, um, the existing budget, and try to go through it and see what's already there, so that maybe there's, um, you know, some things that we could prioritize that we need more than what's already there, but just to see the, how the budget's built from the, from the ground up, basically. And then also to make a determination, I know you brought this up before Mel, as to whether or not, what level of participation we may want them to have in the budget discussions amongst the administrative team as well. If, you know, if we're gonna do that, or if we're just gonna maybe have, John summarize for them what's going on with the administration.
Yeah, I have, I have, I have two minds, I have two minds of a lot of things, but on that, I have, uh, two minds. I, it would be interesting, it would be, it could be really good to have committee members at those admin team meetings, but then I wonder if that might, um, be a little bit, um, I don't know.
Might alter the decision.
Yes.
Well, the middle ground might be for John to come back and basically just kind of report our, our, uh.
That, that, that is what I was thinking, that, so the Subcommittee meets with John.
Keep the Subcommittee up to date.
And then, you know, John and Mike, I say John and Michael meet with the Subcommittee, or John, Michael, and Patrick.
Keep them up to date on.
And they say, here's what, based on all, our meetings of the last few weeks, here's what we think the priorities are. And then our Subcommittee could say, that sounds good, but, you know, the last five years in the school committee, we've really been pushing for X, we think that's a priority too.
And without being too ambitious, I do think, again, if the Subcommittee could look at the budget line, full line item by line.
I, I agree with that.
What's there and what, what, you know, whether or not there's any, any type of, uh, opportunity to maybe, um, reduce the cost in a certain line, you know.
Since I don't intend to volunteer, I think as much work as we can give the Subcommittee, no, I, I think.
I think you should be on the Subcommittee.
I, I intend to nominate you, so.
I do, I do think, um, I spent a lot of time on the, on the budget today for another reason, but I do think to get a good idea of each line item, how much is it either increased or decreased over the last three years or so, and, and to see, um, what areas that we think are undefunded, I think that's, that's a great idea. But I, I don't, John, you chime in, I don't really see the Subcommittee attending those admin council meetings. I think it might.
No, and I'm fine with that, if, you know.
If you're, if you're comfortable with us kind of bringing back to you information as, you know, kind of almost a liaison-type capacity, try that at least and see.
So bef- before you and Michael come, or Michael come with the first budget, you'll have, you'll have gotten input from.
Right.
Whoever's on that Committee. I was gonna say Scott and Julie, but I don't mean, no, whoever's on that Committee.
Yeah.
You'll have gotten input before that budget comes, so I think that.
I think I would like to hear from department heads. So I don't know if that would, that might be not part of the Administrative Council meeting. Perhaps we could invite them to a Subcommittee meeting, just to explain their requests.
That's actually, that's actually a better idea.
I've talked to people in other communities, I know Burlington does it, um, where they do this type of thing. They have department heads come, they have principals come, and talk to school committee members.
So, that would be separate from, obviously, John and Michael meeting with the administrators. Then they would come maybe individually to the Subcommittee.
I think that's actually a good idea, they can come and.
Well, kinda like how we do at CIPC.
Right.
You know, like the, the department heads come to us and they explain why they need.
They could come and lay out their priorities, so we'd have a better understanding of that.
We could do that at a Subcommittee level rather than an open meeting.
Yeah.
Even though it's an open meeting, but.
Yeah, but I would, so that would be separate from the meetings that John and Michael. That I, if it could be scheduled. So then it gives them kind of a.
There's still a layer of insulation between.
Right, yeah, yeah. And also, they can come and they can, you know, passionately say why they feel they need what they need.
Well, to, to.
I think that's good.
To go back to your, the question that brought us down this path though, about what should the marching orders be? I would expect in the beginning they'd be fairly loose, so that we can see what happens, because I think if, if we get a lot of the information we're looking for from Mr. Bernard, then maybe we don't need to do other things. If we, I think we should, I think whoever's on the Policy Subcommittee should have a little latitude to try different things and see what information you're getting, because maybe you get the information and you have long meetings, and then you find out, well, we got a lot of that same information another way. So I would say, having some broad marching orders to begin, but I think when we're starting a committee, it would be nice to have whoever's on there to have a little bit of latitude about.
I think, I think that's right, and I also think, um, obviously, Michael should be a part of it, so it would be you, Michael, and two school committee members?
That, that's what I was thinking you would, you would want.
Right, and then, and then I would think, I think Scott's right, you kind of have these, uh, loose boundaries, but then, as you meet, have your first two meetings, you can define more exactly.
See what you might want for future meetings.
Right, what, how you want the thing to take shape.
And of course, like, looking at the strategic plan, and what that is laying out for the coming school year.
Right.
And, you know, what that entails. Yeah. So.
But then the question is, should the, should the Subcommittee, should we appoint somebody and that, let them come up with some ideas on what the goal should be that comes back to the committee, or should we try to create what those goals are today?
I don't really think you need goals as more, as much as you need, I, I, I guess you could call it a goal, but it's guidelines. What, what, what do you wanna bring back to the committee before we, you know, for when we hear the budget? So, that first night, when, when, um, Michael presents the preliminary budget, whoever's on that Subcommittee says, you know, we met with, um, Michael and John and Patrick, and we agreed with X, but to be honest, we think a higher priority might be Y. And then that's for us to discuss, and we, we've done that in the past, but we haven't had as much information. Not that Michael and John are, you know, feeding us false information, but at least we have, you know, you guys have been directly involved, whoever's on it, you guys, me guy, we guys, us gals.
Every year we come up with preliminary budget too, there's always things that John is looking for to try to, you know, enhance the curriculum, or reduce class size, or whatever it might be, and oftentimes, we sit there, we look at it, and it might be a fairly nominal amount of money compared to the overall budget, and we don't do it, because, you know, apparently, it's not enough of a priority over the other twenty-six million dollars worth of things that we're doing. So that's one of the things I'd like to take a look at, to see if some of these new initiatives should basically take priority over something that's already embedded in the budget.
Right.
You know?
One thing I know is, um, eighty-plus percent of our budget is personnel, and for the foreseeable future, that's not going down. And, so there's just, there's ju- and then the, then, you know, the rest of it, there's just so much to really work with. There's, it's, it's, it's really a small percentage of the budget.
It was funny, we were working on a little spreadsheet today as preparation for early budget planning process, and on the expense side of the equation, just very quickly, we came up with, you know, eighty, almost eighty-five or percent of our expenses, and sort of fixed contractual things that we're obligated to do with utilities and transportation.
Right.
That's eighty-five of twenty percent. So that leaves basically three percent.
No, that's eighty-five percent of the whole budget, he's saying.
No, no, that's eighty-five percent of...
Eighty-five percent of what we did.
It's eighty-five percent on the expense side of the equation.
Oh.
It's eighty-five percent of the remaining seventeen percent.
So those are, those are non-negotiable, that eighty-five percent.
It's almost like, yeah, they're fixed with...
So it leaves you about two and a half percent.
Three percent, yeah.
Right. Two and a half percent of what else we have.
Still, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a little less than a million dollars, that's...
You know, we, we know as a committee, as administrators, as a community, we're under staff at the high school, and for the next two years or more, we're gonna still have close to eight hundred students there. It's not, it's not plummeting.
Right.
And we know we have a lot more kindergarten students this year than we expected, and that could have an impact when they go into the first grade next year. So, you know, we know, we've been trying to expand the foreign language program for many years and failed. So, so we know what those priorities are, I think. And, and as Jerry said, I know it's hard to take something out that's already there, but maybe that's one thing that the subcommittee can do, as Jerry said, look at those things. Maybe, you know, we can increase foreign language if we remove Y. But it's not, it's never easy to remove Y. I spent a great deal of time on Facebook this week, going over the free, over the full day kindergarten again, and, and explaining why we can't have free full-day K. That we would need between five and seven hundred thousand dollars somewhere in the budget, and we don't have that extra money. That would mean cutting five to seven hundred thousand dollars somewhere else.
And so I had this discussion with Mike before the meeting, I was asking his daughter just started kindergarten, and they're paying forty...
It's higher in Reading.
Six hundred in Reading.
Not that, you know, we're proud of it, we're trying, yeah. And, and...
They surpassed us this year.
They did, yeah.
And, you know, the question keeps coming up about state grants, and because of North Reading's per capita income and per family income, it's highly unlikely we're ever gonna get a state grant for this. And Michael's on top of that, and also, in terms of additional Chapter Seventy, if we added full free-day K, we'd get twenty-five dollars per student, and that's gonna be about four thousand dollars or something, or five thousand dollars. That's not gonna cover the five hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars. But it's issues like that, it's issues like fees, or questions say about, on, on social media, and why doesn't the maskers, why do the, why do the maskers have to raise so much money for their, for their plays, for their performances?
Don't they pay the students?
Don't they, don't the students pay the two hundred dollar activities fee? So I had to explain, student pays two hundred dollars. First I said, I despise fees, but I've come to realize without them, we wouldn't have these programs.
But you're responsible for a lot of them.
Yeah, exactly, no, I didn't say that. But I explained that student pays two hundred dollars, can be in as many clubs as they would like, both middle school and high school, and that two hundred dollars covers, there's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in advisor salaries for this fiscal year. We covered that with sixty-seven thousand from fees, and the rest comes from the budget.
And, and honestly, some of those advisor fees are fairly modest, right?
A lot of them are.
They do.
Yeah, a lot of them are.
There's a lot that are...
Yeah.
It's the same thing with, and then someone, of course, chimed in, and, and what about these athletic fees? How can they justify charging them? And so I posted, the athletic budget is close to six hundred fifty thousand dollars. We cover, we take two hundred seventy thousand from fees, twenty-five thousand from expected gate receipts, and the rest comes from the budget. So if you cut that money out, that's three hundred forty thousand dollars approximately you're cutting out of fees. Either the programs disappear, or they become, you have five clubs and two sports.
Our philosophy's been for a long time, that if we can't afford it, we wanna give the community the opportunity to make a decision as to whether or not they wanna have it. If they wanna have it, they're gonna have to pay the fees, otherwise...
Otherwise, we're gonna have to go there.
We can't afford it.
But I think those are things that a, a budget committee can look at. They can look at fees, is there any possibility of cutting fees? I don't think there is. You know, I, I don't have as big a problem with the bus fee, because the fee we charge for bussing is for those who are older than sixth grade and who live within, people who live outside the two mile, inside the two mile district, if they're between first K and five, right?
If they live outside the two mile district.
No, if they live inside, they get charged.
Right, if they're outside, they're...
Right, they're outside, it's free, yeah.
Well, not after...
Not after grade six, right. So, all of this said, who has an interest in this subcommittee?
Well, it sounds like you do.
No, I don't.
You have a great start.
I think Julie would be a key person.
Well, part, part of me was thinking...
Which part?
Depending on who might be interested in the next subcommittee.
Well, I had an idea for someone on the next subcommittee, Mr. Lawyer at the end of the table.
He's already started.
Yeah, he's already started, didn't work on that one anyway, so.
Yeah, I think...
I, I think it would make some sense for, honestly, for Mel being a part of the finance planning team, at least for this...
Oh, on the budget thing?
Yeah, he'd be on the budget.
Well, that's, I mean, I, I liked, I personally liked the idea of having a teacher, you know, somebody with that background, and then somebody from the, who's going to be doing the, going to the financial planning meetings, being involved as well.
Are you interested?
I can do that.
Okay.
But, but at the same time, I mean, I'm, I have interest in the budget overall, and so, but I'm not in the financial planning team meetings, and I'm not, so I think, I don't know, I mean, I don't know with the financial planning team meeting, would, would it help you to be part of that, Mel, if you were going to the financial plan, to be part of the budget subcommittee?
I think so.
And that's, and that's the thing, I mean, what, what, I was assuming, whoever, it would be good to have at least one representative of the subcommittee that's going to be going to the financial planning.
In fact, I think it's a great idea, because the financial planning team is, it's a certain stage, at a certain time of the year, it becomes ninety percent budget discussion.
Right.
So anybody that's on this budget subcommittee is gonna have that much more information.
Yeah, you'll have, you'll, you'll be in those rooms to hear from the people directly, and not, you know, you'll be able to pull more, like, well, when somebody tries to question something, you'll say...
You'll be able to give better answers, right.
Yeah, and, and, and also point out, like, when they're criticizing one thing in the budget, you can bring up five different things that didn't even make it to them, that are also worthy, you know...
And that always falls on John's shoulders, which is okay, but I think it'd be better if there's two or three people who can fire back.
I'd be happy to share that responsibility.
Yeah, exactly.
I think hearing the requests adds some merit to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Directly.
Yeah.
Things that get requested that didn't get prioritized.
Yeah.
So I, I do personally have interest in the budget, but I think for the committee, I think somebody that's going to be going to financial planning should be there, and I like the idea of a teacher hearing from some of the administrators about some of the needs as well.
Well, who's a teacher on the committee?
So...
It's up to you, Scott, I mean, I...
Yeah, well, but the other thing...
If not, I would be interested in the contract stuff, so I mean, what...
You can be on both of them.
No, thanks.
Yeah.
Come on, what kind of attitude is that?
I was interested in the contract one, so I was thinking...
Okay.
That, and so if...
That's fine.
Again, I, I had interest in both of them, so I mean, whatever the committee thinks is best.
Janine, Jerry probably isn't volunteering in the contract one, are you?
I'll do it if nobody else wants to do it. I've looked at some of the stuff that Scott's done, and you know, it's, and we are doing the negotiations for the teacher contracts.
I don't wanna leave Janine out, though.
Janine can step in, yeah, if you wanna do it, Janine.
Huh?
He said boo hoo.
Are you interested in the contract review? I mean, not, I mean, I know you're interested, but...
Oh, well, I, where I am interested, I think it would make more sense to have Jerry, because he's done so many of the contracts that...
And he's on the teacher contract.
And he's on the teacher contract, so.
I mean, that would also be nice to sort of be able to get some of the knowledge from the experienced people on the committee.
I'd only take about fifteen minutes.
So...
Fifteen, you're giving yourself a lot of credit.
Yes, I'm interested in the budget and finance subcommittee.
Okay, I, I guess I am also.
So...
So, we need nominations, can we, can we...
Can we do it at...
Can we do two at a time?
I don't see why not.
All right, so I'll make a motion to nominate Mel Webster and Julie Cokey for the budget and finance subcommittee representatives.
Second.
Okay.
You go ahead.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And now for the contract review subcommittee representatives.
Make a motion to recommend Jerry Venancia and Scott Buckley for the contract review subcommittee representative.
Yeah, I say again, if Janine wants to do that, okay with me, you know.
You have the history, makes more sense. I mean, if you were adamantly, you didn't wanna do it, I would definitely take it over, but I did think it makes more sense to have you do it.
The problem about this is now there's gonna be a lot of paper, 'cause I can't email anything back and forth.
Now, with Mike, this is senior...
We need a second on this.
This is a senior member, am I in charge of him?
Okay, second, yeah, you're in charge, yeah. You can tell him what to do on that.
Email, email all your commands.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Respond right away.
We have a motion by Janine, and a second by Julie. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, just on the first committee, would, do you want us to maybe reach out to the two of you when we think the time is right?
Yeah.
If you feel like we have the information, we'll initiate that first meeting, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We're actually gonna have a preliminary discussion with all of the administrators on Thursday.
Okay.
So we're kicking it off, you know, sooner than you might think, so it won't be probably very long before we're looking to...
Okay.
Bring people together on that.
All right.
Yeah, it's coming quickly, so, okay.
Next, we have the official enrollment for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Bernard, or Michael, whoever's handling it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think both Michael and I, so we're sharing with you what is traditionally referred to as the October one enrollment. It happened to be that October one was a Sunday, so this is labeled October two, but this is our counts as of, as of that date, broken out by, by either grade and school, or just school, in the case of the middle school and the high school. We anticipate going forward with a more detailed presentation of projections of enrollment. It could be as early as the next meeting, which would be October thirtieth, if not November thirteenth, definitely, but I think Michael's looking to do that with you on the, on the thirtieth. But I think this is, you know, this is pretty self-explanatory, where our, our enrollment is, is almost exactly what it was for the past school year. I think we're off by about five students. I don't think there's anything that's dramatically, you know, anything that proposes any kind of a surprise for year.
Yeah, I think the two biggest things where maybe the projections were off from a year ago, we talked a little bit about it at the last meeting, was we saw an uptick in the kindergarten this year. I think that's evidence of just, you know, an incoming of, of, you know, new families with, you know, school-aged children over the last five years, since the, the birth rates five years ago. So that number was, was higher than what we had thought about a year ago, by, you know, twenty-five or so students, which we discovered during the budget process. And then what we also did see is that, that sixth grade enrollment was a little bit higher than what we had projected, so I think we, we didn't really lose many students at all from fifth to sixth this past year. It was, you know, less, almost less than one percent, you know, one, one and a half percent. So I think that was, we had projected kindergarten to be lower, and overall, middle school to be a little bit lower, and those, everything else was very close to being...
Yes, I, I know you're gonna do a full projection, but you, we had projected forty-six fewer students this year, and we ended up with six fewer. I think next year, we're projecting another forty to fifty fewer students. And, and I just, I just don't know if I believe that now, based on what I'm seeing here.
No, everything is different. Yeah, that's why you redo it every year.
Okay.
So everything changes on the new, the new data, and so I think, when you see the, the next years, and then three and five, ten-year projections out, one of the things you'll, you'll notice that's drastically different than a year ago, is you're not gonna see the, the declines that you may have been seeing, be seeing last year, you know, three, three years out, or five years out. You really, what you'll see, probably on October thirtieth, is, you know, maybe, you know, the middle school kinda leveling off, even, even increasing and kinda leveling off around five hundred and fifty. You'll see the high school, kind of the large decrease happening potentially next year, and then sort of leveling off in that seven fifteen, you know, range or so for a period of time, and overall enrollment kinda hovering around twenty-four hundred over the next three or five years. That's, that's kinda what we're seeing. I've had meetings with, over the last couple of weeks, with Daniel McKnight, the town planner and so forth, and trying to look at what else is on the horizon in terms of developments that could bring some, some increase in, in enrollment. And there's nothing in the immediate future that looks like we're gonna see a drastic change, but there is some things that are, that are going on, and some age fifty-five and over developments that will be coming online, so even though you won't see a lot of potential families, it's likely could be, could be able, a little bit of an impact, but...
You have those, for example, over, over by the little school, you have eight or nine houses going in there.
There's nine, yeah.
So if they have two kids per family, right, you don't know, they could have more. You could be talking fifteen to twenty more kids just at the little school. You don't know, right? But, and I'm assuming those are gonna be pretty big houses, they're not gonna build, you know, ranches or anything, so...
Yeah, so I think what you're seeing, what you, I think the new trend will sort of be things that's kinda leveling off, and we'll have to see what, what happens in those developments, and, but you're, you're definitely seeing a, an increase in, you know, the economy and the real estate market, and some new homes are being, being built, and turnover of houses is increasing a little bit. But there's a still, there's a relatively high senior population in some of the demographic data I've looked at, so you could start to think that some of those, the turnover of homes could increase in the next five years, and that might impact some of the numbers, and those are the things you'll have to...
It's kinda speculative, really.
Yes.
It is.
It's speculative, it's hard, it's hard to, to nail it down, but for the most part, I think the, the process we go through when we develop the ratios of progression of students from grade to grade, because it has been relatively stable for the last five or ten, I think you can, you can kinda rely on what's happened in the past will continue to happen, and you just, and you can kinda look at some, some of the numbers, but...
It was surprising, though, to have forty more students this year than we expected, I think.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I think, I think, I think the kindergarten being about twenty-five off, and the, the sixth grade was like ten off, I think that's, that accounted for it right there. So it was a couple, a couple of areas.
We reduced our factor, too, with the grade nine retention.
We did, yeah, we did.
Scott?
Well, I, I just have a, a question about, and I know you can't control everything, and kids might move, but just how the disparity in some of the classes, where, you know, it might be nineteen in one and fifteen in another, and in particular, there's, if you include the hood kindergarten with the full in the, in the AM in the morning, there's, there's four classes on here that have twenty-three, and in three of those four, there's another class that could have had another child, so that we weren't at the twenty-three number? And so can you speak a little bit about, like, if there's, like, for example, the hood grade three? There's twenty-three in one, twenty-two in one, and eighteen in another. It seemed like it could have been divided a little bit more, so that you didn't have twenty-three kids in that, and just didn't know how that ended up happening?
I think one, one issue is special ed, students with special needs, and what their accommodations might be.
Okay.
That's large, gonna be a significant factor, why there might be...
But Scott, I, I, I can't believe you brought that up, 'cause I was just gonna suggest that the administration deserves a lot of credit, and parents ought to be delighted at the class size in the elementary school. You know, out of forty-six classes, grades one through five, forty-three of them have eight, I'm sorry, twenty-two or fewer students, so I, I think that if you look at that overall, that is the one area, you saw the twenty-two, twenty-three, eighteen, but other than that, I mean...
I'd say the kid, the kindergarten, you'd like to be honestly a little lower for each of those.
We're trying to accommodate everybody, too.
Right, but I do think those ones at the hood are hybrid classes, right, John?
Correct.
But even like, instead of saying seven in four, six in five, and again, it's a minor point, and it could have been a couple kids were gonna be in there and didn't end up going to full, going there, and...
But the, the class sizes are really, I mean, I, I think, you know, at the little school, you have twenty-three and twenty-one in the first grade, and the others, you have seventeen, but again, that's a product of demographics.
Right, you're not gonna have three classes of forty-four kids.
And then it flip-flops once, once you get lower.
But those numbers overall, if you look at them, are unbelievable. I mean, our, our goal is to keep, you know, elementary school classes at what, twenty-two I mean, our, our goal is to keep, you know, elementary school classes at what, 22 or below.
Correct.
And we've certainly done that here almost across the boards.
The highest class size we have is one 23 at the hood in the third grade.
Well, we have 23 at the, at the hood in the third, we have 23 at the batch in the third and we have 23 in the first grade at the little.
There's three 23 and then that one kindergarten is 23 in the morning.
That's it. It's, it's really, really a good job, I think, of, you know.
What number do we get to that we say we need to add another section?
You know, I haven't had to, to do that yet. We were, we were getting nervous as the summer rolled on with the kindergarten.
I'm going to say it's 25 or 52.
Oh, yeah.
From 25, 26 to 17, 18.
Yeah.
That's, I don't know if you can do much, so I'd say 25 or 26.
That would be, that would be my guess, is that if we got to 25, I would be, you know, having that conversation with, you know, the chairman. We, we thought we were approaching that in the summer with, with the kindergarten, but we, we, we just, we didn't. And it was getting very close, though. But I think the, yeah, once we start to hit 25, definitely 26, I think would be something we would not be very happy about.
We've evolved not being able to accommodate everybody for full day kindergarten to doing a lottery and not getting, accommodating everybody, so.
Yeah, everybody who wanted full day kindergarten again got it, yes.
In their home district, right? Right now?
Uh, yes.
Unless, unless they, if someone opts not to, right, they can go to another school if they don't want to be in the hybrid class or whatever.
I don't think we had a case of that.
No, we were close to it.
Yeah, we were close.
We almost had to get there.
Well, I was looking back at, you know, I don't know, it might have been 10, 11 years ago, we had many elementary school classrooms that were 29, 30, and 31 back then. I was actually talking to Marcy Bailey about it because her son was in, it was a fifth grade class at the batch that had like 31 to 32 kids, yeah.
Talking 10, 11 years ago.
Yeah, yeah. So thankfully, we've gotten away from that. That was not good. Any other questions on enrollment for this year? We don't need to take a vote here, correct?
I don't think so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next, as Jerry said, the real, the real mundane, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 policy revisions from the early bird policy subcommittee. Who's on that, you? The 7:00 AM meeting policy subcommittee.
Mel's just going to bed.
About two hours early, I've just, so I don't know who wants to take the lead. Scott, Janine?
I don't care, do you want to, do you want me to?
I did it the first time, you can go on.
Mind if I offer just an introduction?
Of course.
Just maybe for the committee's benefit. So we have been meeting, we are scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, Ms. Embriano, Mr. Buckley and I. We're looking at, I think we're in the area of about 100 policies, correct, that MASC had recommended be reviewed and, and some minor changes and some more significant and some that I think you felt there was a need for no change. But inherent, so this is the first chunk of about 10 or 11, I think. There'll be, so this is probably going to happen now for a few meetings, Mr. Chairman, that we'll be bringing a group together, but in this group, there are a number that also, I think, we're going to be recommending that there be policies repealed, correct, with the replacements, three or four, I think. So those, those should be attached to those respective policies in the packet. But I think it's fair to say that what's, what's here is largely reflective of what MASC was recommended, although not exclusively.
Okay.
Correct. And, and just to follow up on that, I mean, I think, I'd like to applaud Mr. Bernard and the people helping Mr. Bernard because they really did most of this work because our, our labels do not correspond with MASC. So it's not like it's MASC says, we recommend this change of this policy.
Oh, you mean their lettering doesn't correspond to our lettering?
No.
We had to go search for policies that fit the spirit of what the policy of the MASC was, but it's good.
And that was, that was the, that was the hard work, which, was it Ann that did a lot of that?
It was Ann, Ann helped me with that, yes.
And, you know, Ann and Mr. Bernard did a great job delivering packets to us and saying, here's the MASC policy that's being recommended, here's the closest we could find. And what we would do is we would look and sometimes we would say, we liked our policy better, other times we would just incorporate a piece of it, and other times we would just say their policy is just overall better and we should repeal ours and put it in place. So trying to remember.
Or sometimes they combine two.
Correct.
And so we just rename it and get rid of the other one.
Correct. And so, so I'll try to walk through this quickly with, without reading them all before the, Mr. Chairman asks me to read every word of them.
I am not going to ask you to read. If you can explain, you miss, give us an overview of what the changes either mean or why they were done. We're just, what we're doing is, in many cases, we're implementing the recommendations of MASC, correct?
Correct. When I looked through these today before we came here, I think all of these, none of them were substantive, they were, they were just clarifying language, there might have been updates to law or terminology that might need to happen, or there occasionally there was a policy that we might not have had. And so, so generally, like, for example, if we start with ABB, and I don't know, do you want to try to do motions on each of these individually?
I think we have to.
Yes?
Yes, we do.
What time is it?
And so, I'll take my time now. So policy ABB, the school committee powers and duties, we are proposing this in lieu of what we used to have as BBBA. And again, it, it follows the same language and it just is updated recommendations from MASC and, you know, the legal references as well. And so it just talks about the general duties and, of the school committee as a whole. And I don't know, do.
I had, I had one question. It says in the opening paragraph that these include the responsibility and right to determine policies and practices and to employ a staff. So can we, that means we can hire people? Is that what they're saying? Or is the staff, the teachers and administrators? I just find that strange wording, that, that's all. I don't, I maybe, maybe, I guess probably in bigger communities, they have a staff. Like, I bet Boston School Committee, I bet Worcester, Lawrence.
So we get paid now?
Yeah.
Only if you're part of staff.
But see, that was, I was going to get to, we could hire a staff, but we don't get paid, so I don't really, but anyway, I just.
Again, this was the, in general, we tried, if we were going to fully implement the MASC, we tried not to nitpick on the, on the language because what wasn't clear in what they gave to us is why they were making all the different changes. They would just say updated, updated legal, like, the law has changed or something, and we didn't know exactly why the language was proposed as it was.
There's something, there is something else interesting in here. Under the last bullet on the first page, the school committee shall appoint upon the recommendation of the superintendent. And one of the positions in there is the, is the special education administrator, which we don't have, we have a pupil personnel, but we have in the past.
I've always argued this.
Have been involved in that hiring, correct?
Yeah. Well, it was a.
Well, it says, you appoint upon the recommendation of the superintendent.
Right, but in the past, I think we were involved in, were we involved in interviews of that?
Because I thought, I think the statute at that time read, I had this big, with Kathy Willis, she and I went around and around.
When we hired, when Cynthia was hired, right?
But we, I think you were satisfied with that process when we.
Right, right.
We based it on the recommendation of superintendent.
Yes.
But I'm just wondering if that, if the situation had changed.
Correct.
Okay.
I believe it is, the Director of Pupil Personnel Services and, and Director of Finance.
Right, right. And that was on a recommendation of Kathy too, and I might say a very good recommendation.
Because I remember interviewing Michael and wondering if he was old enough to drink at the time. Drink alcoholic beverages, that is. The rest of this looks fine with me. I mean, the only thing I'd object to is working harmoniously with other school committee members, but other than that.
We're, we're trying to plan for the future.
Thanks.
What we're thinking.
So I guess, and, and Mr. Bernard, just to clarify, so we had an ABB already in place.
Correct.
So we are modifying the AB, ABB.
Right, it would be a motion for, to approve for first reading a revised policy ABB is what we'd be looking for.
Okay, so I move, move for first reading?
No, to approve first reading of revised policy ABB, school district organization, school committee powers and duties.
Okay, I'll try this again. We, so I move to approve for a first reading.
Revised.
Policy.
Revised policy.
Revised policy ABB, which is titled, School Committee Powers and Duties under School District Organization.
Second. Any further discussion? Now we can go faster on the rest of these. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Okay. Now.
Did you want to put, we're now doing this into ABB?
No.
Well, we have to, we have to approve that.
It's going to be repealed as a.
Right.
Yes. One second. Okay, and so, so BBBA is now null and void.
But you have to move, do we have to move to repeal it? You have to move.
Yes, yeah, so it, it would now be null and void, so our recommendation was to repeal this one. So I moved to, I moved to approve, do I have to do a first reading on this?
No, just repealing it.
Okay, so I just moved to repeal policy BBBA entitled, Duties and Functions of the School Committee Under School Committee Operations.
Second. Further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Okay, so this next one, School Committee Member, Members Qualifications and Oath of This is something that I, I won't make jokes about people not being in compliance, but we, this is just updated language from MASC on the obligations we all have to, you know, do the conflict of interest law every two years and the qualification, the orientation we have to take when we get elected. So I will move to approve for a first reading, Revised Policy ABCB entitled, now entitled School Committee Members, School Committee Member Qualifications slash Oath of Office under the School District Organization Section.
Second. Further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Next, I, again, this is just, do, do you want, do you want clarification? How about this, I'll clarify if it's not just trying to comply with MASC's recommendations. So I move, I move to approve for first reading, Revised Policy BBBB entitled, New School Committee Member Orientation under the Section, School Committee Operations.
Now, on this one, I just want to make sure, like, because we had put some stuff in here that we wanted to.
And I think we thought it was captured on the back of the first.
I didn't see the back, okay.
Half, halfway down.
Saving paper, I see. Okay, all right. I'm, I'm fine with this. Any other?
You have a motion in a second.
Motion in a second.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
The school just B A B.
I was waiting for you.
There's no B A B.
I thought you'd be quicker with that.
I know.
There's no B A B, it's B A A.
Yeah, Vicky, my vote, Vicky, my vote.
I, I move to approve a first reading of Revised Policy BBBC entitled, School Committee Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops under the Section, School Committee Operations.
Second. I don't have any issues with this one. Basically says that if we find conferences that we feel would be educational and improve our standing on the committee and our understanding of education and education laws, that I basically can propose going to it and if it passes muster, get reimbursed. It's basically what this says, so. So we have a, a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Volunteering to go?
No.
I know in our goal setting, we, we were all very adamant about trying to do.
Yeah.
Some extra education. So next, I move to approve a first reading of Revised Policy BBD, which is entitled, School Committee Dash Superintendent Relationship under the School Committee Operations Section.
Okay, so I was going to say, so we are repealing one on the next, the old one.
Yes, yeah, this is really, this one used to, in the past, we had two separate.
Correct.
Policies, one of which was one line and the other which was one paragraph, which is the one we're going to be repealing, which is the next policy to look at. And so we are just, we think the MASC policy does a nice job of combining the two.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to repeal policy CF entitled, School Committee Dash Superintendent Relations under the Section, General School Administration.
Second. Further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Can you film me the image here?
I move to approve the first, the first reading of Revised Policy BBF entitled, Advisory Committees to School Committee under the Section, School Committee Operations.
So what we knew here is section five.
Correct.
And the open meeting law applies if we have three or more school committee members on any of those subcommittees, which we don't, so.
Correct. And if I recall, the MASC just said, just updates to the open law. The reason for the modification was updates to open law legislation, and so we just want to make sure we are in compliance with the laws.
Any further discussion? Oh, wait, do you have a motion? We don't have a motion, do we? Did you make a motion?
I moved.
A second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Just imagine how much fun this is at 7:00 AM now.
Yeah, I'll be there the next one.
I move to approve first reading of Revised Policy BCBB entitled, Notification of School Committee Meetings under the Section, School Committee Operations.
I'm just looking at this, I didn't, it says you have to give 40, minimum of 48 hours notice, right? But does it say where the notice has to be?
Well.
It doesn't, does it? Is that somewhere else in our?
Because up above, it does say Town Hall.
Right.
I don't remember if it said.
So there's no, usually it would say it has to be, it can be online on the district website, it has to be like two or three places on, at Town Hall, et cetera, and I don't see that here, so I'm kind of.
Well, it does say, Mel, it'll be filed with the town clerk at least 48 hours in advance.
Right, but that doesn't say about where it.
I mean, the only.
It's a change.
I think that's essentially opposed.
The only, the only, and I'm going out a little bit on this, but I would say, number one, it says as required by law and it references the law.
Okay, so it's probably in that law that says.
And so, and then if, what we wanted to do as best we could was make sure we didn't have to continue to amend anything, so if you say something is, is correct notice and then that law later changes, we would have to go back and update our policies again.
And I'm assuming the law is, master of law is 38, colon, 18 dash 25.
Correct.
So that probably says where you have to.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve a first reading of Revised Policy CEI entitled, Evaluation of the Superintendent under Section, General School Administration.
Second. Looks like we're meeting all these as, as stipulated, so. Any further discussion? Are you 90 alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
And now, this next, this next policy was, we think, combined with the last policy we just accepted about the procedure for evaluating superintendent. And so we are moving to repeal policy CEIA entitled, Procedure for Evaluating the Superintendent of Schools under General School Administration.
Second. Further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve first reading of Revised Policy DB entitled, Budget Planning under the Section, Fiscal Management.
Second. I was waiting for that. Any further discussion? This is just in addition that superintendent will have overall responsibility for budget preparation.
The only, the only comment I would make, Mr. Chairman, is that the next section is basically what we're adding here, the next policy, if you look, that we're going to repeal.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to repeal policy GAB entitled, Budget Planning Involvement under the Section, Personnel.
Second. Further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Now, the next policy, if I recall, I'm trying to look here.
Brandon.
Yes, I think this is a, this is a, a new policy that MASC is suggesting, which we thought was better than DCA, which was just very generic, and we thought the MASC policy was better, so we're proposing to add this. So there is no, is there a current section DC, Mr. Bernard?
There is not a current DC, that's why this one, this new one will fit in that coding.
Okay, so this is not a move to, I guess this is a move to approve a first reading of policy.
DC.
DC entitled, Annual Budget.
Correct.
Under the Section, Fiscal Management.
Second. Basically, basically just outlines what the purpose of a budget is, and it's strategic and not just a bunch of numbers thrown together on a spreadsheet is, if you want it to.
To, to.
Yeah.
I know.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
And I move to repeal policy DCA entitled, Goals and Objectives under the Section, Fiscal Management.
Second. Further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? This looks new to.
I move to appoint Mel to this policy.
No, meetings we have to change.
So DFD, again, is going to be another new policy, I believe, and.
It is.
There is no DFD currently, so this is a new policy that is being recommended by MASC. So I move to approve for first reading, Policy DFD entitled, Funding Proposals and Applications under the Section, Fiscal Management.
Second. Is the first line supposed to say the school committee? Because it says the school committee and/or his/her designee, so that doesn't, it would be their designee if it was supposed to be school committee, the rest of it says the superintendent. I'm assuming the first one is supposed to be the superintendent also, or the school committee without and/or his/her designee.
Not necessarily, it could just be a pronoun.
But it's encouraging, but it's encouraging the administration. I think it is supposed to be the school committee, but I think you're right, the pronoun.
No, but why, so it's, why would the school committee?
I know what you're saying.
So the rest of it is the school committee should encourage the administration, and then basically the administration then reports, moves the process along and reports back to the school committee.
But you don't need any pronoun, you could just say the school.
Right.
The school committee will encourage.
Right, that's what I was.
If that's the way, but you're right, Mel, that's a good question. What did they want to do?
I think if, if I recall, I'm trying to recall the conversation. We had a lot of conversations on all these policies. And I think this was just, I think a lot of what is happening already is Mr. Bernard is encouraging people to try to find other funding sources. And so I think that might have been what we were trying to do, is either, that we, we obviously would like that, but Mr. Bernard's already doing a lot of that.
Right.
I'll check on the language.
But it's referring to the school committee as a his or.
Yeah, correct.
See how that.
Singular plural is connective, though, yeah.
So I think we should probably table this one.
I'll, I'll look and see what he adds.
Look what MAS C wrote.
Okay.
It'd be nice to save one for next meeting.
Oh, we have more.
Oh, we have a lot, we have ninety-nine policies.
The next one's on smoking, Mr. Buckley.
Correct, so, we move, I move to approve a first reading of revised, of a, this is a revised policy, correct?
It is.
Yes, of revised policy GBRM, which is entitled Smoking, under the section Personnel Professional.
Second.
Any discussion? Basically just adding the fact that e-cigarettes and vaping is prohibited.
My only question is for e-cigarettes, should there be a dash? Or is it just e-cigarettes like that?
Pretty sure it's just like that.
We can check on that.
On that, right.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll ask.
All's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
And I move to approve a first reading of, is this, is this a revised policy? Yes. Yes, because it's, the back is a, okay. Revised policy KCAA, entitled Public Participation at School Committee Meetings, under the section General Public Relations.
Second.
This is interesting. On number three, it talks about topics for
Public.
public discussion, or public presentation, public comment. And it says the topics must be limited to those items listed on the agenda. We've never limited that in the past. Well. And I don't necessarily agree with that.
Dr. Trouton did enforce that policy.
I don't agree with that, I don't know if you do, but.
I don't agree with it at all. In fact, I basically, when I was chair, that's when we started accepting comment without it being on the agenda, so.
So it looks like.
When was that policy last revised? Two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven.
So we must have approved it then.
So was that from MAS C?
This is.
This is the MAS C.
I, I don't.
Look at, Mel, look at BCBI.
On the back? Oh, this one.
Public participation throughout a regularly scheduled meeting will be left on the discretion of the chairperson.
Right.
And that's the way we've been doing it.
Right, I don't, I don't agree with this policy.
That's, that's what we've been doing since two thousand, it goes back beyond before that, actually.
One, I think people should be allowed to speak on whatever topic they would like, provided it's germane to the school committee and the school system. And second, I think we should have the option to let people speak during the committee, meeting, although I think it says.
Well, in the very beginning, number one says at the start of each meeting.
Right.
People can address anything they want to.
It says it will be invited.
Yes. So I wonder if, if one and three are supposed to be two different things, that if you want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, you can do it in a public participation.
I don't think it's mutually exclusive. I think you could have people participate, but the discussion is limited to those items on the agenda, so.
So would you want to just clarify that?
Yeah, but we have.
I don't agree, no, no, I don't want to clarify it. I, I won't approve, I won't vote, personally, I won't vote for any policy that has number three in it.
And I agree because it's never been, it hasn't been a policy for a long time.
Right.
My, my question was, what if those topics, you can raise any topic you want at the beginning of the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, but I think that's, isn't that what this refers to?
You know, Scott, what I do is, I just, I just make number three, public participation throughout a regularly scheduled meeting will be left to the discretion of the chairperson.
Yeah.
That's what I would put in.
Take out the, the number three in red.
Right, Mel?
Yeah.
Replace it with.
Take out the three in red and put this public participation statement here.
Yeah.
BCBI.
There's no Bickie or Bo.
Nope.
Wait, so what are you proposing to, to switch it with?
Switch three on existing policy. I'm not three in the existing policy.
With this one, the public?
Public participation.
BCBI, Public Participation Section.
Select the fourth paragraph down, Julie.
Yeah.
And put that as number three on KCAA.
So I move to approve a first reading of revised policy KCAA, with the modification that section three will be replaced with public participation throughout a regularly scheduled meeting will be left to the discretion of the chairperson.
A second.
And I should, under section, entitled Public Participation at School Committee Meetings, under the General Public Relations Section.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Does it flow with how it's itemized? Does that sentence flow? Is it consistent?
Are you saying it should be up further, or is?
Right. I think it works fine. It works fine.
I think it works right there, because in the next four, three or four, they get into the kinds of remarks that are allowed and not allowed, like you can't defame or abuse anybody, or talk about personnel matters. So I think it fits there. But when it comes back for the second reading, if it doesn't, we can always change it then. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the revised policy as amended tonight. Any further discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? We're getting rid of number three, and we're replay. No, the fourth one. It says public participation.
Starts with public participation.
Throughout a regularly scheduled meeting will be left to the discretion of the chairperson.
Okay. And I move to repeal policy BCBI, entitled Public Participation, Regularly Scheduled Meeting, under the section School Committee Operations.
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, Policy Subcommittee. Excellent job.
Excellent job.
Really need to step up the pace, though.
I usually do slow these meetings down. I relate.
Okay, next we have a presentation from Superintendent Bernard. It's his year-two update on NRPS 2021, as strategy for the future. Any other presentations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, in your packet, you should have a copy of the PowerPoint that I'm going to be referring to, to guide, an update to the district's strategic plan. As I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, I very much appreciate the committee's support of and investment in the district's strategic plan, the administrative team, with the input of the faculty and staff. It's a great deal of time and energy into, into using this document to kind of chart our, our future for the district. And so your support of it does not fall on deaf ears. I make it very known to the, to the faculty and staff of the district that, that this is a document that is widely utilized in our discussions around budget, and also in just our overall strategic planning and the setting of your goals that you do each summer, so I thank you for that. Just as a reminder for you, kind of at the, at the root of NRPS 2021, which is now, we're actually into year seven. If you remember, we had NRPS 2016, which was the first, kind of the inaugural five-year strategic plan. NRPS 2021 is the, is the successor strategic plan, and it all stemmed from the administrative team's reading of the book Strategy in Action. And we continue to use that as a blueprint to kind of chart the course of the district for a five-year period. And essentially, what this slide is, is achieving is to demonstrate that what happens in classrooms every day represents the kind of what we hope for is the solid interaction between students and teachers around the content of each classroom. I think it's important just to kind of call attention once again to the vision, and, and on the next slide will be the mission of the school district. Our vision is kind of the bumper sticker, if you will, kind of the slang that we use to kind of just capture what it is we do in our, in our district each day, and that is we hope to prepare all students to be productive citizens who thrive in the 21st century. Extending that is the mission, which centers on core values. And in this slide, you'll notice the dedication to excellence, service, and lifelong learning. Those tend to be the representative core values of the district. And we continue to use the vision and the mission to drive not only the development of the strategic plan, but also our daily work. Just as a reminder, what, what NRPS 2021 captures is that we, we have kind of a hub in the middle, and the seven spokes around that hub are the strategic objectives. And there are seven of those, and I'm going to talk to you about, about those a little bit more specifically in just a moment. But each of those strategic objectives has been linked to the teacher and administrator standards of the present educator evaluation system. The importance, I think, of that is that as the school committee sets its goals, as the superintendent sets his goals, as I work with administrators in setting their goals, and administrators then work with teachers in establishing their goals, that there's a connectivity among all of those that I think is very important, because we don't have one group or one person going off somewhere a little bit rogue, but instead, everybody is kind of working in sync. And I think that in NRPS 2021, our strategic plan has gone a long way to achieve that. There are three major strategy areas under which each of the seven strategic objectives falls. You might remember that we've, we've continuously referred to these as the big rocks. These are the kind of the things that go in the jar, and they're the, the non-negotiables. They are, they are the teaching and learning strategy, the technology integration strategy, and the student support services strategy. Those are kind of the umbrella strategy areas from which the strategic objectives stem. So I do want to spend just a moment talking to you about the seven strategic objectives. Under the teaching and learning umbrella, we have to ensure that the district's K-12 curriculum is vertically and horizontally aligned to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, as is applicable. And second, to attain instructional core initiatives by, number one, hiring and retaining highly qualified educators, providing professional development opportunities to explore best practices in curriculum instruction and assessment. Number three, utilizing multiple sources of data as a means of improving student achievement and enhancing student learning. And number four, supporting the responsible integration of technology for enhanced instruction and student learning. There were two strategic objectives underneath the technology integration strategy, and they are to ensure effective digital learning across the district and to enhance the technology, infrastructure, and support system in the district. And under the student support services strategy, there are three strategic, strategic objectives. They are to ensure that all students have access to a high-quality, free, and appropriate education, to implement and monitor a consistent instructional process that focuses on student learning to measure individual student progress within the curriculum, and to evaluate safety protocols throughout the district, and implement a safety plan that provides the safest and most secure environment for everyone in the school community. Within each of those seven strategic objectives, there are a number of goals and action plans, and those are all spelled out in pretty significant detail in the, in the, in the larger document of NRPS 2021, which now is approaching sixty pages, actually. And again, this, this slide just, just, I think demonstrates what I think is the importance about the alignment, and that each of these goal-setting organizations, if you will, the committee, the school improvement plan goals that come from each of our five schools, the budget goals that, that you ultimately adopt each year, and all of the educator goals. By having an alignment there, we hope that we elevate student achievement, and that's what I think NRPS 2021 has helped us to do, is to, is to continue to elevate our student achievement by having a very specific chartered plan for where we hope the district will be at the end of its five-year life. As is the case each summer, the administrative team comes together for two days in a retreat, and we, a large part of the work that we do over those two days is centered on revising the, the strategic plan and making adjustments to reflect those things that we've accomplished in the prior school year, and making any adjustments that we might want to make for, for the coming school year. And what I'm, what I'm going to now focus on in the next few slides for you is the work that came from the start of the summer retreat, and we've also continued that work into the fall. In fact, we have a strategy session coming up on this coming Thursday, when we will all be together to just make some final adjustments. So I, I think it's important now to kind of call out for you the focus areas under each of the strategic objectives. For 2017, '18, and under the teaching and learning strategic objective, we will be focusing on the vertical and horizontal alignment of curriculum, so this is across grade level, and also then vertically from grade to grade, from school to school, whether it's elementary to middle or middle to high school. We continue to seek ways to enhance our curriculum leadership model. Those of you that have been around for a while know that that is something that has been on the agenda for the, for the district administration for quite some time, but we've just, quite honestly, have never been able to afford the model that we, that we hope to, but that continues to become, you know, an area of focus for us in 2017, '18.
John, that, that issue also has ramifications on the contract and contract negotiations, correct?
It can, it can.
So, I know in the past.
Because of the stipended positions within the teacher's contract, yes. The educator evaluation system, we're actually into year five. I think it's fair to say that that's gone well. We've now had people go through a two-year cycle, and I think we're in a place where, you know, it's, it's pretty widely understood on what the expectations are for each person who's evaluated under the, under the newer educator evaluation system. I'm going to talk with you a little bit tonight under my supplemental report about the release of the 2017 MCAS results, but MCAS 2.0, we're kind, that's now the new assessment, statewide assessment. I think it's fair to say that we are in a very good position to be fully prepared to take an online computer-based test under the mandate of 2019. The integration of technology, while technology integration is its own strategic objective, I think it would be irresponsible to not acknowledge that if we're going to effectively teach and, and students are going to effectively learn, that we have to integrate technology into, into the work that teachers do with our students. And I'm very proud of the work that our data teams are doing at each of our schools. We, with your support, we instituted data team leaders two years ago. This is the third year now, and they're doing some good work at helping, helping other teachers to analyze data to inform their practice. And I think they've made some very good strides in a, in a pretty short period of time.
John, can you just talk a little bit more about that? How that works, perhaps at the elementary level, there's a few people.
I can, I can, I can talk about it, it's kind of, it's similar at all five schools, the three elementaries, the middle school, and the high school. So we have one faculty member that has been appointed by the principal to lead data teams and the analysis of statewide assessments.
Okay.
And we do that to try to inform instruction. So there's one at each of the five schools, one person, who's a full-time teacher, that has this as an added responsibility.
Just one person?
One person, correct, yes.
A lot.
It is a lot. It is a lot.
Well, that's some, something we've talked about before, about adding personnel in, in this area.
Mm-hmm.
For data gathering and data handling. Because it is a lot.
It is, and I'm, again, in my supplemental report tonight, I'm going to talk to you about radar, which is a new kind of data report initiative that the state has released, and the data that's being provided to us there is, is very good, and I think can be very valuable, but it's another example where, you know, we're just, we don't really have people that are in positions to do, I think, the level of work that I would like to see get done, but people just tend to take on, as you know, people tend to take on additional responsibilities because they see, they see the value in what the, in what the data is showing us and how it can be used to strengthen them.
And this is separate from curriculum support?
It is.
Yes.
Yes. This is year three of those folks.
Okay.
It is separate from curriculum support. In some cases, it might be the same person.
Right.
But it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be. Under technology integration, we have a focus, you might recall, with the, you adopted the robotics course at the high school Robotics Academy last spring. That's a new course being offered at our, at our high school this year. And also the future-ready schools. North Reading is part of the future-ready initiative. There's some very exciting work going on here around seven, what they refer to as seven gears, seven modules, if you will, that make up the future-ready schools initiative. They are curriculum instruction and assessment, the use of time, technology networks and hardware, data and privacy, community partnerships, professional learning, and budget and resources. So what the administrative team has been doing, starting at our retreat in the summer, and this work will also continue this coming Thursday at the Administrative Council meeting, is basically looking at technology and how it can be used to enhance personalized learning for every student. So I think you're going to see some, some very good work come about in the coming year that I'll be reporting back to you on how future-ready has helped us to, to more effectively integrate technology into our classrooms. As you know, with the rollout of the one-to-one initiative, it now calls for the capital plan to have a certain amount of money appropriated each year so that we can advance the one-to-one distribution by a grade level each year. And as well, we also talked with you about this year, and you adopted the idea that we would like to, you know, start to infuse some money into upgrades and repairs of technology, particularly at the three elementary schools.
John, I was wondering if you should add as a bullet point the Wi-Fi upgrade at the three elementary schools, if that's a subject.
The Wi-Fi upgrade, it does, it goes back a little bit to right here.
Okay.
Enhancing the technology infrastructure. We could not have been able to achieve that without, without the Wi-Fi upgrade. Professional development is obviously, you know, technology is just changing so rapidly. It's, it's just, it's, it never really, it never really stops and settles, it just kind of continues. So we, we are, you know, continuing to be very supportive of professional development for our teachers, and as well, the one-to-one initiative. As you all well know, we instituted that this year in grade seven at the middle school following last year's pilot. It's going very, very well.
John, I just have one comment.
Sure.
Can you just share how the structure of the elementary tech integration people have changed?
Yes.
I just heard about it, so I thought that the committee might be interested in hearing.
Yeah, but we had previously had, this year being the first year that we have gone to this kind of new model, if you will, is we had three digital learning specialists that rotated among the three schools, each with kind of an area of expertise that they would share with the other two schools from wherever they started. What we went to this year was we replaced one digital learning specialist in the school for the year. That was based on, I would say, two factors, the most significant of which was, I think, from the teachers and the principals at the schools, but because they felt that the kind of stop and restart with the transition of a person leaving and then coming in twice in a year was not always good. And that was kind of the more significant feedback that we received. The digital learning specialists themselves also spoke about their desire to kind of stay in the building for the year and develop the connections that they thought, you know, they hoped would develop. So what we committed to was, much like having the older model, we committed to that for two years. We're committed to this model for at least two years, and we're going to evaluate it at that time and see which of the two would be better.
Great.
So that, what's happening now is whatever digital learning specialist was assigned at the school, they're going to stay until June at that one school. Student Support Services, there's a lot to be said in this one as well, this strategic objective. You hear me talk a lot about, one of my goals this year is about social-emotional learning initiatives. I actually went to a very good workshop last Thursday with Dr. Daly about some things that we're hoping to bring to North Reading. I think it's fair to say that, I spoke to you, I think, on the August School Committee meeting and also at the opening day meeting about the interest in the Excel initiative that North Reading had applied to be a part of, but unfortunately, I think only nine of about thirty-some odd districts were selected to participate across the state. But what that did for me was show that there is great interest among our staff. I think I had somewhere around twenty-two people reach out to me when I was making the application to be a part of Excel, indicating that they wanted to be involved in some sort of social-emotional networking. And so I'm looking, continuing to look at other ways in which we might be able to kind of capitalize on that interest. And I think it's fair to say that I have found some places where we're able to do that. We formed a social-emotional learning task force that's up and running now. This is year three. Just a lot of good work, I think, going on to try to, you know, strengthen our culture in schools and just give our students the supports that they need to kind of do their best learning. And that's what's really rooted in kind of the whole social-emotional learning world. We are continuing to strengthen our response to intervention and Massachusetts-tiered system of supports. Again, these are kind of prescriptions for students that we utilize to kind of, you know, provide them with the supports they need without going through the special education process. I think you're all pretty well aware of our interest and our work around adding specialized programs for students with special needs to keep them in district. We've done a lot of that in just a very short period of time, and I can assure you that we are continuing to look at ways in which we can keep North Reading students in North Reading for their education. And lastly, why I think this kind of last bullet of school safety and security is important to keep under Student Support Services is it's our belief that for those people that come here and work and those students that come here and learn, that they can't do their best work and they can't learn at their best if they don't feel safe coming to school every day. So we've put a lot of emphasis on the ALICE program, the COPCIN 911, technology-based alert system, the Envoy sign-in. And I will be sharing with you probably somewhere around December. And it was one of my goals for my evaluation cycle. It's a complete overhaul of our emergency operations plan that has been, received the input of the fire chief, the deputy fire chief, the school resource officer, the police chief, and the two assistant principals at the middle school and the high school working with me to take this task on, which is probably about a year in the making. And it was time, I think, once the middle school and the high school came together on one campus that we had a look at how we were, you know, going to respond to an emergency situation, given that, you know, a pretty significant change in the structure of having two separate schools, the middle school and the high school coming together as one, required us to go in and do some pretty significant work around how we would respond in this building now to an event when we needed to, starkly different from what it would have been if we were in two separate schools. So you'll be seeing something as a draft, I would say, sometime in the next month or two. And then I just have this last slide. These are just kind of things that come to us that we want to put some energy into. They may not necessarily be rooted in NRPS 2021, but in some cases, in fact, in most cases, we've now, in the update, included them. And I'm just going to run through them rather quickly for you, but I just, I think it's important for you to get a sense for the coming year, what are some other things that the administrative team is looking at with the staff? So school safety and security continues to be, you know, something that we all feel very important about. And, you know, as new things come our way, you know, I think it's fair to say we would be taking a very serious look at their possible implementation. Staffing, you know, I think the curriculum leadership is an area where I really think that we, with all due respect to the people that work as kind of teachers in the curriculum leadership work, their primary responsibility is still in the classroom teaching. And I just, I have not felt for quite some time, back to when I was a principal and now as a superintendent, that that model is the best that it could be, but it's the one we have. And how we refine and how we look to do something differently in the coming year is up for discussion. But I think it's fair to say we're looking to, a lot has changed, and I think we need to keep up with what those changes are by looking at our curriculum leadership model and making some recommendations for improvement. Staffing to affect student-teacher ratios, particularly at the high school. It's no secret that, I think we have a significant number of classes with populations that are at that twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one enrollment that we just don't feel is best. And then what are some new and expanded initiatives that we might want to take on? We're looking at STEM and STEAM, both at the middle school and the high school. We're looking at expansion of foreign language and continuing to expand our digital learning course offerings. I'm going to be coming to you in the spring, most likely, with a pretty exciting pathway that we're looking to adopt in computer science for the high school. So again, just another area where we're continuing to look at. Social-emotional learning, we have a number of committees in the district, a public awareness and understanding of social education, which has been in existence for, I'd venture to guess, probably as many as ten years, continues to meet. We have a health and wellness committee, the social-emotional task force that I spoke about just a moment ago. And then developing and assessing social-emotional learning and Growth Mind workshops. That is an extension of the workshop that I went to with Patrick last Thursday that we're very seriously entertaining bringing to North Reading starting in the summer of 2018. Digital learning, I think the one-to-one initiative is self-explanatory. I've talked to you before about my desire and goal to have a North Reading Public Schools app. I think it's fair to say that I will have something to release on or around December 1st. That's nearing completion. The leadership team, I had them engage in a book study. They very graciously agreed to read a book with me, and we are reporting out on that. We started in the summer. It's called The Innovator's Mindset by George Khoros. And it's just about technology creativity and how we can strengthen that in schools. We are about, I'll say, eight of fourteen chapters in on the discussion. We're taking a look at a SEAL of Bili literacy program. This is a program that would essentially provide a certificate of achievement for a student who demonstrates, I'll call it, significant competency in foreign language. There's great interest among the foreign language staff at both the middle school and the high school to introduce something like this. So we have a meeting set for November that we're very seriously looking at being able to provide students upon graduation with something more that speaks to their having taken on foreign language as an area of particular interest as opposed to just meeting a graduation requirement. And then the last thing is parent university. And as part of my report to you tonight, my supplemental report, I'm going to speak to you about where we are more specifically, but I'm very excited with the response that I've gotten to the faculty being involved with parent university. And I think we're going to have a really nice day for the community on Saturday, April 7th. And again, I'll save when I show you the survey results a little bit later tonight what some of the things are that we're thinking for, for April. So with all of that said, that's kind of the annual update to NRPS 2021, very much a live document that we refer to very regularly as we continuously seek to improve as a school district.
Questions, comments? Have you got care?
Well, the only thing I would say, Mr. Bernard, is
Yes.
thank you for the work. And I just, every time I read the strategy, I'm just thinking from a budget standpoint about how a lot of what we need to do requires funding, and we just are limited on it. And if maybe you could speak a little bit about how you're able to, because it still seems like we're accomplishing most of the goals even without being able to fund a lot of it. And if you can maybe speak to, you know, how you're able to do that.
Sure. I think, I think if I was to really do a kind of a two-column chart with you all and show you the things that we hoped to do and the things that we actually accomplished, on its surface, it might look a little disappointing, that like you wanted to do all these things, but you really, you were only able to do these. But I've never really felt that way because I think that why we get to the places where we sometimes get, and I think we obviously perform well, is largely by people believing in what they do and wanting the district to be something that they can be proud to say that they're a part of. And so people tend to take on a lot of additional responsibility. And I think sometimes, while we might not get, as an example, you know, could you reasonably have two data team leaders in an elementary school? Or more? I think you could. But the people that are there believe in the value of what they're doing, and so they kind of make it work. At some point, though, you're going to be in a position where it's like, how long can you sustain that? You know, I do, if I'm really honest, the thing that probably concerns me the most about those things that we've been seeking to do and haven't been able to really get to a place where I think we need to be long-term is around the curriculum leadership. I think there's just so much coming that, and there's so much going on that people need to take part of outside of this district. And so every time we want to send them to a workshop that we think is really good, we're pulling them out of a class because they're all teachers that do the curriculum leadership work as, you know, like twenty percent of their regular work. And so we tend to be reluctant to do that on any kind of, you know, large scale because it means that their time with their students is lessened because they're off somewhere learning something new that we want them to bring back to the district. Whereas if you had a model that was somewhat different, you might be able to, you know, not have the sacrifice of them in front of their students because they're going off to a professional development workshop or leading a workshop with their department or with their grade level. But I think, I think if we go into, we go into NRPS 2021 with our eyes wide open, and Michael's here, and he's intimately involved in all the conversations, I think we are realistic enough that we try to strike a balance between what we really would love to have, but also being very mindful of, you know, what is the ability of the community to afford that? And so we try to temper that with what do we see as our highest priorities. But we never go into it with a question of like, if you had a blank check, what would you do? We don't go into it with that, with that kind of a vision. We go into it with what do we, what do we feel we really need right now? And then there may be a few wants kind of woven in through that. But how are we able to get to where we are? I think it's, I think it's just representative of what people come here and do every day and just, you know, they want, they want, they want to be proud of saying, you know, that they work in North Reading and that the students come here very well-prepared, very well-supported, and work with us to, I think, you know, certainly at least advance our learning and maybe not always achieve our goals, but certainly work toward, you know, being close to achieving them if there's a case where we haven't. So I'm hoping that's answered your question.
Yes.
I guess I'd add that I think we've continued to do well or even do better at what we do well, but we've been restricted as to what we can add. And that, to me, has been the main restriction of the budget, you know, expanding foreign language.
Yeah.
We've been able to add some courses, do the one-to-one initiative and some other things. But some of the things we've wanted to do, we haven't been able to do. Get down, you know, reduce the class, the teacher-student ratio here at the high school, for example. So I mean-
And I don't look at, I don't look at those requests that we make as luxuries.
No, they're not.
I don't think any of you do either. I mean, they're not luxuries. They're, but when you start to, when you start to have twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty students in a high school class, that's, that borders on being unacceptable. You know, it's, I think, but it's, you have teachers that want to teach those courses when we offer a new course, and they'll make it work, you know? But at some point, you do have to kind of say to yourself, but are we sacrificing something else? Are we compromising something else? I don't think we're there yet, but I do, I do think to be able to sustain that over an extended period of time becomes more and more challenging.
Julie?
I mean, I think the curriculum leadership positions are of utmost importance. I think if we look at the new science standards,
Yeah.
the soon-to-be-changing ELA and math standards, I mean, I think that's something that we, as a district, should really put at the forefront of our thoughts for the coming budget season. And I think, looking at other districts, we're probably one of the only ones that do not have curriculum leaders. I've been in many districts, and that's kind of a staple. And I think we've gotten away with a lot.
Yeah, I agree.
With less.
I can tell you, budget is a hu, I'm not going to deny that budget is a huge issue there. It's huge.
It's been the only factor.
It's, and-
It's been the only reason why we haven't.
Right.
There hasn't been from a lack of support from the committee or anybody else.
And I'm saying, is it can come to the top of the budget list, which I think I agree, you know, right now, ninety-eight percent that that should be one of our top items, but we're going to have to cut somewhere else. I don't see how, because it's not, it's not inexpensive.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Right.
I mean, it's been, I spoke about it when I interviewed for this job at The Batch. My interview was at The Batch. I spoke about something that I hadn't been able to accomplish as a principal.
But sooner or later, it affects the education of our kids.
That's to my point about it's the sustainability of being-
I think we've managed with far less than we should have been, but I think we need to kind of bite the bullet and fight for that.
But what we're talking about here are full-time positions that aren't teaching positions, correct?
That's, that would be, that's one concept.
Right.
One way to do it, but you don't have to do it that way.
No, but whatever way we do it, it's going to cost
Right.
It's going to cost.
A significant amount of money.
The evaluation piece would be helpful, I think, too, but that would have to be administrative level. But it's one model, it doesn't have to be the model. You know, whether it's fewer teaching responsibilities.
I mean, teachers need that support to help them do their job well, so.
I could not agree more. It's a priority area for us, but it has been for years. And unfortunately, as Mr. Webster said, it just, it ends up taking a backseat because the realities of the budget have forced us to kind of make tough decisions in the eleventh hour.
Well, then the other issue is, as Mr. Vannasie and I have been involved, it does become part of bargaining.
Yes. It was, it was three years ago.
The Teachers Association has to agree to implement, we have to agree together to implement something.
Well, we need to come up with a plan first.
Well, we've had plans in the past. I'll just leave it at that right now.
We have. But it still remains a focus area for us for this year.
Right. Yeah, well, I'm assuming we'll probably have some sort of plan again this year.
I think you can assume that, yeah.
Right. Anything else?
No, I was just going to comment that under Student Support Services, it talks about ensure that all students have access to a high-quality, free, and appropriate education. And, you know, the word "free" kind of jumps off the page at me when we consider what we talked about earlier with all the fees and for different areas. So again, it comes down to budget. And I think our reach should be sometimes, you know, beyond our grasp, but I think that's a good job, John.
It's free if you want, if you just want your student to go to school and not participate in anything
Right.
other than classes. It's free. That's not right.
And maybe not get here.
Right. And maybe not get here, exactly.
Right.
Then it would be free because you wouldn't have to pay for the bus and-
Right.
But it's not right. We've talked about how it's not right, but at the same time, we have no options. And we're like most suburban districts in the state who have the same fees.
Yeah.
Or in some cases, higher. So, anything else? All right, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, before we leave New Business, I actually had one thing I wanted to bring up earlier. I spoke with Marcy Bailey the other day, and she is the new chair of the Substance Abuse Coalition, which is part of the CIT. And she is looking for a school committee volunteer for that And she is looking for a school committee volunteer for that, to, to serve on that committee as basically a liaison to us. It's not an official appointment. I discussed someone who I thought would be interested, but if anybody, the next meeting, she's been trying different meeting times because it involves, I think, teachers, students, school, uh, school administration, et cetera. The next meeting is at 3:00 on October 24th, I believe it's here, somewhere. I don't know if it's here or down in the essential admin offices. But if anybody's interested.
If you're interested.
Would you?
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
We could have two-
Want to do it?
We could have two people also, couldn't we?
It depends on what Marcy wants, I guess.
Aren't you already on that committee?
No, I'm not on that committee.
He's on CIT, right?
I was on CIT.
You're not on CIT anymore?
No, because of the other meetings I've pulled myself off.
So Jerry's interested, are you interested also?
If Julie's interested, you do it.
Is that who you were thinking of?
We talked about you because you have a younger one and a high school student.
Sure.
And Marcy said she was looking for, she'd like to get some input from someone who has kids in the, in the schools. That doesn't mean I can go back and say we have two people interested.
Well, perhaps if we have two people interested, we could work together to make sure that at least each meeting is covered.
Yeah. So let me, let me go back, we don't have to take a vote or anything. Let me go back to Marcy. She might even say, you can have two people come, that'll, that'll be fine. So, so I'll let her know we have two people interested. I can't.
My youngest is graduating.
It's the Substance Abuse Coalition, and it's part of the CIT, which is what the Community Impact Team. And Marcy's the new chairman of that.
Amy's on that too, right? Because Amy was talking about that too.
Amy luck was, yeah. I think John, Sir, John is a part of that.
I'm on CIT.
Of the principals? Oh, you're not, you're not on the substance abuse?
No.
Okay. Are there any principals?
I think I could be.
Okay. All right, so that's that.
But I cheer the K-12 Action Team, and I think that's kind of my charge.
So one other thing I'll mention under New Business, and we'll move on there. I noticed today, there's a, there's a bill in the State House that will require a minimum of 20-minute recesses at, I don't know if it was elementary and middle schools or elementary schools only. So it'll be interesting to see how that bill fares. Because of course, it doesn't take into consideration that we might have to lengthen the school day, which would mean we'd have to-
Negotiate.
Negotiate. But that kind of never-
With the powers, with the teachers.
So, I have a question. What happens if, if the state passes it and-
We have to implement it.
Do you have to go into the contracts and renegotiate them?
If it makes the school day longer, because if, if you need-
Or you cut from academic-
Or you cut from academic time, but you need to have enough time in learning.
And still meet the 900.
Right. So, but I just wanted to mention that, it'll be interesting to follow that, see what happens. Okay, routine matters, minutes. We have the regular meeting of the School Committee, September 25th, 2017. Take a motion to approve unless anybody found anything.
I didn't find anything. Motion to approve open session, September 25th, 2017, second.
For discussion, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Then we have the October 2nd, which was our pre-town meeting, and then we adjourned to the town meeting, our pre-town meeting meeting, and then our participation in town meeting.
Motion to approve open session prior to town meeting, October 2nd, 2017, second.
For discussion, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Budget update, nothing, Michael?
Not this.
No, next.
Staffing, nothing staffing?
Nothing, no staffing.
Bids and donations, there's a lot of them tonight. Who gets the?
Julie does it better than anybody.
I would like to make a motion that the School Committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $50 from Philip and Kathleen Buston to purchase classroom supplies for the RISE program at the middle school.
Second.
For the discussion, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion that the School Committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation from Tom Lazden from Troop 750 of $67.77 on behalf to fundraise the benefit, the North Reading High School Maskers Performing Arts Program.
Second.
For the discussion, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. John, on, on that one, is this, is that the student who built the?
It is.
Yeah.
You did a nice job on that.
You did a very nice job. So this was surplus from the money raised that he just donated back to, he picked a group that he wanted to donate. It was Maskers, yeah.
Excellent.
I would like to make a motion that the School Committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation from Shalaka Taneha in totaling $260 to purchase classroom supplies for the Bachelor's School.
Second.
For the discussion, halls in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion that the School Committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of 30 lacrosse sticks, 30 indoor balls, and a curriculum guide with a total value of $500 to develop a new lacrosse unit for grades six, seven, and eight at the middle school from the North Reading Youth Lacrosse Association.
That's really cool, second.
For the discussion, hearing none, halls in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion that the School Committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 to support costs associated with the Parent University Initiative at the North Reading Public Schools from Jeffrey Simons.
Second.
For the discussion, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion that the School Committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $1,500 to purchase a large color printer for student artwork at NRHS from Jeffrey Simons.
Second.
For the discussion, hearing none, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. I just want to mention, we have a lot of great supporters of schools, but Jeff Simons has been, not only financially, but has been there for every school project we've tried to complete in this town, every override.
Number one cheerleader.
He is, yes, the guy is-
You need him on your side.
His, his kids are all done with school, too.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Oh, yeah.
A long time ago. His youngest, I think, is 25, my daughter's age, or 26, so.
Jeff donated to sign out on the field, the athletic, sign this out on the football field.
I'd like to make a motion that the School Committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of materials valued at $1,757.41 from the North Reading Youth Services to support the health curriculum at the middle school.
That's excellent. Motion to second for the discussion, hearing none, halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Glad to see we've picked up again on the donation. This is an excellent batch here. Again, thank you to everybody in the community and the organizations that support our school system. I also will add, this isn't a donation, but I've reached out to youth softball, girl softball, related to the scoreboard project at the, I haven't heard anything back yet, but I have reached out to them, hopefully to get a scoreboard before next, before next spring.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I would mention in this section is just that, just to recognize the efforts of the Bachelor's, Parent-Each Organization. Attended the, their auction on Friday night, and it was sold out. They had standing room only. They raised a lot of money, and again, it was a fun event and just recognizes when we talk about how stretched we are in budget, how much the parents come together in this town to support the needs of the community.
I heard it was a bang-up success. I haven't seen the numbers yet, especially with the batch is celebrating its 100th anniversary or birthday. We haven't decided yet which one it is. But I'm just upset that I didn't win the trip. I'd like to register that right now. But I think a teacher won.
A teacher won.
A teacher one, and she was, yeah. What was her name, Johnson?
Oh, yeah, oh, good.
She was so excited.
I was in sick for a week.
Yeah. And they actually, they had, they had, they did it on a live video on Facebook, and she was, she was thrilled. She was like, she couldn't believe it. So, anyway, that's great.
Much deserved.
Yes. Okay, next, subcommittee updates. We have none. We haven't had a subcommittee meeting in the last two weeks.
I have my three kids with me.
Subcommittee schedule, we have Athletic Subcommittee tomorrow at 12:30. We have the Early Bird Catch, it's the Warham Policy Subcommittee on Wednesday at 7:00 a.m. We have SSBC next Tuesday at 5:30. We have NORCAM October 26th at 7:00 p.m. And then we have Finance Planning Team November 2nd at 8:15. No, I think that was at 8:00, John, isn't it? Did they change it to 8:00?
No, it was, it was-
Oh, that was the previous one?
It was the Thursday, I think we were going to move to 8:00 because I had a 9:30.
All right, at 8:15. Administrative report, Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a few things I want to just highlight for you. I spoke earlier about the RADAR reports. This is Resource Allocation and District Action Reports. This is a new source of data. The Department of Education has been supplying to districts as of this year. It was piloted with a number of districts last year, I think there were nine or so. But in any event, what I wanted to let you know was, of the 10 districts in the SEEM community, SEEM Collaborative Community, seven of us have collaboratively written an application for a grant, which could be upwards of $100,000 if we were to receive it. The grants are, the grant applications are actually due tomorrow. We will be fine with our submission. All final edits were made today. But what we're seeking to do is to use the data that was provided by the RADAR reports to seek instructional coaching around inclusionary practices in our seven school districts. So that's kind of the overarching goal, is that if we, if we were able to secure the funds, that we would have somebody that would be a so-called expert in inclusionary practices working with our teachers in professional development across the seven school districts. So it could be a one-year appropriation, it could be a two-year appropriation. We've submitted for both, but once the application goes in and we have an answer, I'll certainly keep you up to date on that. But I thought it was important for you to know that, you know, it's another example of where we're, we're seeking to be the beneficiary of some grant opportunities from the state. The, the second item I want to share with you is that today I received the embargoed preliminary MCAS 2.0 assessment results. There's going to be a public release on Wednesday, and I thought it was important that you be aware that that's coming. Some strikingly different data this year. There is, essentially, the new accountability system is taking over, so it's kind of, it's almost like a held-harmless year for grades three through eight. Only the high school will still be under the old accountability system because its test is still under the, what's now being termed the legacy MCAS. That's what the term is being used to, to identify the MCAS prior to 2.0. I'm expecting to receive student reports on October 24th, and I'm expecting that we will have a presentation for you on October 30th on North Reading's performance, and that we will be sending out the individual reports to families on or around November 1st. So again, embargoed results will receive today. There's going to, you're going to see publications in the, in the, I would imagine, the Boston media on Wednesday, the 18th, individual reports on the 24th, a report to you on the 30th, and then mailing out the individual reports to families on, on or around November 1st.
So it's interesting, MAS did a lot of social media today related to this. And what I read, what I got out of it was, warning, you're not going to like these results. They're going to be a lot lower than the past, there's going to be a lot fewer students in exceeding expectations category, and a lot more in the meeting and whatever.
Partially.
Partially meeting, yeah, because-
Yeah, so the, I attached with you, for you tonight, a letter that actually is, is an updated version. I had gotten a letter from Acting Commissioner Wolfson on Friday that they amended at about 5:30 tonight, actually. And so I got, I sneaked it into your packet here with, it was, it was about two pages longer than the original letter. And I was actually glad that it was. But I don't think that point that you just made is, is off-base, Mel. The accountability ratings are different. It was advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning or failing, depending on the grade level. Is exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, or not meeting expectations. So I think it's, it's probable that you're going to see that range of students that maybe had been in the proficient needs improvement melding into the kind of a not-meeting-expectations range. But there's some very specific language around what that means. And on the surface, it's almost like, I, I think, to try and draw a comparison between how students performed, how your child might have performed last year and the rating and the, and the performance that they have this year is almost, they're, I mean, they're telling you, don't even attempt to try and do that, but it's natural, I think, for people to try to, to do, to do that. But if we can convince people and our, and our messaging is that the system is different this year than it was last year, and we're going to do our best to kind of hammer that home, then I think people will come to the determination that you're comparing apples to oranges.
Right, I think the other message was, is-
Except at the high school.
The students are still performing well compared, compared to the rest of the nation.
Correct.
But we're making, we're making our standards tougher.
Was there any reference to the NAEP in what you saw?
Yes, yes, that we'd likely see results that are similar to NAEP.
Mirroring that, which, which is very good. And North Reading has participated in NAEP a couple of times now. I, I was on a conference call with Patrick Daly Thursday. We learned a lot. We did another one today, which was very different than the one Thursday, so I was glad we did it today, with three of our principals, and there's one more tomorrow. So there's been some very good communication. I think there's something, the fact that we received results today and they've been embargoed only until Wednesday morning is interesting. And I don't know why that window is so short, it's never been that, but I think it's-
Well, we're late anyway.
Well, we are later than normal, yeah, we are. But they could, they could have still been giving us the normal 10-day window for the analysis. But I think, I think they're, I think it's another, and I don't, I don't know this because I didn't hear it, but my sense is that it's to kind of get people off of that thinking that I'm going to sit down and take the time to compare where we were last year to where we are this year, and they don't want you to do that.
Well, that's my, so my question to you is, what, what is actually, actually going out on Wednesday? Because if there are results out and, you know, the Globe has, online has them all, and it shows-
Sure.
A North Reading Elementary School with 35% in not-meeting-expectations, and then the Facebook posts start and hysteria starts. I just want to be prepared to deal with that.
Well, I think we have to be careful, too, because the media could be looking at previous years.
Right.
What I, I can tell you, I can tell you what I know. And, and what that is, is last Wednesday, the Executive Director of MAS, the Mass Superintendents Association, spoke to the Merrimack Valley Superintendents Association about his conversations with the Department of Ed and their hopes for the messaging to the media. I would say that it's, I would characterize the message to, to us as superintendents was that, you know, a sense of optimism from MAS that the commissioner was hearing, and, and the value and the importance of that message to say that this is very different, and that his, his conversations with the media, you know, needed to, to strengthen that. The communications today out of the Department of Ed lead me to believe that there's optimism on their parts, that they know the message that needs to go out to the media, which I think they're actually doing that tomorrow in anticipation of the release on Wednesday. So my sense is they're trying to send that message, that it's, it's an apples-to-orange comparison, so don't even try. How well the media receives that, I don't know that anybody can predict until we open up a paper.
What exactly will be out on Wednesday?
Wednesday is the release of, the public release of the results.
But will it just show North Reading, or will it show all our schools?
I don't know.
That, that's what I want to know, because-
My sense is-
Typically, it's schools.
My sense is it will have to be broken down, because you have a three-to-eight system, and you have a high school system. So to not, to do it only as a district just wouldn't make sense to me. It would have to, I think, but there's no leveling, there's no leveling of the elementary schools and the middle school. Remember, I used to have a level one, two, three, there's, there's none of that.
This year, there's no leveling. The only reason you drop down is if you don't have 90% expectation.
It could only be a level three, right? And there's no, there's no fours or fives this year.
Now, is there a way for you to send us the data at a certain time on Wednesday, when the embargo-
Sure.
Is lifted, just so it can happen?
For our, for our schools?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just go on Boston.com and-
Yeah, but I'd rather get it from John, so I know it's accurate.
No, I can't.
You know, is this-
I just, it's embargoed until-
Right, to whatever time, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's too new.
Is this letter going to be sent to all the parents, then?
This letter is going to go with the score reports, assuming that he doesn't, it's not changed between now and the 24th, because like I said, it's a different letter than I got last week. But if, if it's the same letter, that letter is going to be accompanying the reports. And our principals also send kind of their own, you know-
They have their cover letter or something?
We send, we always send kind of like a school-based, you know, letter from the principal, too.
And just anticipating questions or concerns, if, if there are cover letters from the schools, would you mind sending those along as well, just so we know what was told, too?
I will do my best to remember that, yes. I will try to remember that.
How is this going to affect the Abigail, the Abigail Adams and the other scholarship? Because it used to be-
It used to be a-
Advanced, right?
Well, you still have that system under the high school.
Oh, that's right.
The high school system is still the same. It's the only, it's the only level it is.
It's going to be interesting.
As it always is.
That'll be a couple of weeks.
As it always is.
I just wanted to know what was said to people before.
Okay.
Okay.
Next.
Next, Parent University. I just, I thought I would include for you, there's a survey, results of a survey they administered, it's in your packet. I'm not going to walk you through it, it's, it's a little bit cumbersome. But I just thought it was interesting for you to see the kinds of topics that parents are saying they'd like to hear more about at Parent University. So these are the things that we're kind of zeroing in on. I'm really excited about this. I think it's going to be a good program. So you can see that mindfulness, stress reduction.
So are you working with-
What's the scale, is that percentage, or that just number of, that percentage of responses? What's the scale of that percentage, or that just number of, that percentage of responses?
Yes. Percentage of response.
John, there are a few other towns doing this. So you were, the superintendents working together to kind of, what did you, Melrose and who else?
It's, they're just popping up everywhere.
I know Burlington, I know Burlington and Wakefield. Yeah, those are the two I know of.
Yeah.
But no, we're not, we're not, we're not doing something jointly.
Be interesting, though, afterwards to maybe compare some findings, or maybe some things.
Yeah. I think, I think the models are similar.
Yeah.
But we're not like sitting in a room together saying, is this what you want to do type of thing, no.
But you can share resources.
Right.
Oh, yeah. You could.
This particular person is great, why don't you look?
Yeah. No, you definitely could. But remind, remember, a lot of these are going to be offered by people within our district.
Sure.
These are our teachers running these workshops, or others.
Maybe we can rent them out and make some money for the district.
I like the way you think.
Yeah. Okay.
The next thing I have is just, gotten kind of required as the district's representative to periodically update you with executive director reports from the SEEM Collaborative and the North Shore Education Consortium, so I've included. I've done this for you before, so I've just given you a sample of each from a recent meeting that I attended for both collaboratives. The next thing is just a reminder that we will be having a ceremony tomorrow at 4:00 right outside in the, kind of the atrium area here to dedicate the Distance Learning Lab in honor of Dr. Trottin, Dr. David Trottin, the former superintendent of schools. I'm hoping you can make it as your schedule allows. I think we have a nice program planned for about an hour-long ceremony tomorrow. And then, oh, I didn't, I don't mean to go backwards, but just very quickly, so we didn't talk about the coding system with your goals in the superintendent's report. Did you see what, did you see what I was trying to do there?
You've done that before, right?
No, I have with mine. This is the first.
Oh, I see. Okay.
LG is Leadership and Governance.
Yeah.
So LG, and then it's Item 3F1.
Okay.
Let's see, on the next page, you have FAM, that's Finance and Asset Management.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, that's the coding system I was, I talked about at the last meeting. It might be helpful to you in tracking your level of achievement toward meeting your goals, and then I did that in my report as well. I've always done it for my goals, but I'm doing it for yours now. So as one of your goals, you wanted to do more in honoring the celebrations of things that went on in the district, so I've asked the principals to share things with me when they come across their desks. So we have, we have four students that were named as commended students. That's a, that's a pretty good number, four students to be a commended student in the PSAT-NMSQT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, top 3% of 1.6 million test takers. And they are Sarah Buston, Owen DeKleen, Monica Stancheva, and Emma Wall, and then Caitlin Galvin, who was here tonight. She's also one of our student reps. You haven't heard from her yet with the student report, but she was here for the United Nations Conference, has been named a semi-finalist, which is approximately 1%...
That's impressive.
...of the 1.6 million test takers. So, yeah, she, it's, it's pretty significant.
She's going to have to be a lawyer. Mark my words.
She did a good job tonight, didn't she? Yeah, she's very articulate.
I also noticed that, I spoke with Dave Johnson the other night at the football game, and he said that he is now honoring a student of the month...
Yes.
...in athletics. So it might be good if we could bring those to...
They, I think the first one was in the paper on...
I think it was Kyle Bythrow and Carly Veezy, right, for the first month. So if he could bring those in the future, when he recognized them, to the school committee. Something else you to remember?
I'm bringing forward those things that they tell me.
Okay. I'll make sure Mr. Johnson tells you.
There's a lot, a lot of good to report.
That's good.
And this is, this is new, so I think it's just getting off the ground.
Great.
But yes, we'll do our best to try to share as much good news with you as we can.
Appreciate that. As I said, we want to recognize...
It's good stuff.
Good stuff happening. Okay. John, there was one thing, and I don't know if you have any info. I was going to bring it up under the SSBC MSBA, and I forgot, the cooling tower drainage issue. Is there anything to...
Yes. I could talk to you about this. So we've scheduled a meeting for 8:45 on...
Well, maybe, maybe we should explain it for us. So there's, the cooling towers are draining into the wastewater treatment plant.
The cooling tower essentially is the system that when we operate the air conditioning or the air cooling, cooling of the air, I guess, conditioning of the air, essentially when, when we operate that system, there is a, what's referred to as a dump of the system. And it's, it's the water, the condens, it's the condensation that builds up from the running of that system. When it flushes, that water is piped into the wastewater treatment plant. There's a little bit, would you say that there's a little bit of disagreement on whether or not that system needed to be piped into the wastewater treatment plant?
I think so, yeah.
I think there's disagreement among whether or not that needs to be. Bottom line is, it is. It's piped in there right now. It doesn't, this does not happen continuously.
No.
I think it happens probably twice a year, would you say, Michael?
Yeah, it builds up over time, and then...
It seemed to happen a couple times recently, and it seemed to happen, it was a much larger...
It only happened once about, about three weeks ago.
A much larger amount of water than they expected, the way I read it.
No, I think that they're expecting the amount. It's just, what it is, is it creates an unexpected amount in the system, in the plant itself.
Right.
But the amount that comes from the cooling tower...
No, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is pretty, you know, I think you can pretty, pretty, they pretty much know what to expect, but they just don't, the wastewater treatment operator doesn't know when it's